It's February 13th, work session at 4:30 Thomas T. Smith Council Chambers. First item on the agenda is the proclamation for the Officer of the Year, which we'll take care of next week, and then there's the Mayor's Award. First item for us to discuss is a public hearing, consideration of sale of property locally known as 1722 Dodge Street, City of Burlington with conditions. And Eric's gonna tell us about that. I hope.
Yeah. This is a property we acquired through the abandoned building program, 1722 Dodge, at the north end of the dead end of Dodge Street, just west of the former Perkins School there. It is a single-family home, does need quite a bit of work. It's a four-bedroom, one-bath home. The very nice lot, nice location, but again, it does need quite a bit of work to bring it back up to current codes and standards, a lot of wiring and plumbing. Have had some interest for rehab, have also have some interest to potentially buy the lot, demo it and build new, so. I guess those, depending on what offers come forward at the council meeting, those could be considered by the councils what the best option is, so.
Do we have any so far?
No formal offers, but quite a few that express they will be here, so.
Okay. You have questions, counsel? All right, next we have the consideration of sale of property locally known as 2500 Summer Street.
This is the former armory property used as storage by the city. Per the 2080 agreement, it was, that was approved back in July, it authorized transfer of the property to the airport authority, so this resolution would go through that process of having the public hearing and then transferring the property to the regional airport authority per the 2080 agreement. So just a procedural thing, but we do have to have the public hearing since it is a sale or transfer property.
Okay. Questions?
What do they intend to do with it, I wonder?
The 2080 maintains that the city can continue to use it for our purposes, storage purposes, so won't see really any effective change of use on that at this point.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Nick, are you coming to tell us about this? All right, this is consideration of ordinance prohibiting construction of wells within the city limits.
Yes, the restriction is a change on the non-potable wells currently under the ordinance. Non-potables are allowed under a special direction based on the water works manager's discretion. This ordinance change restricts it completely in this area. If you want to throw that map up quick.
Yeah, go to the computers, Steph.
There's currently a monitoring site at South and Madison, and in this red, which contains the current plume, it would restrict non-potable wells to be installed in this area. Based on the DNR's recommendation, there's currently free agent in the dirt, so this is just one of those pathways to try and help cause any problems from occurring.
So does this read right? It then says ordinance prohibiting the construction of wells within the city for use as potable water source, is that the right?
That's the title of the ordinance. In the ordinance change, it talks about restricting non-potables in that area of description, so.
That's why I was confused.
Yep. And so that area of description is this map.
Okay. And we have another place that they're testing at?
Correct. They're currently, they're currently on the way out of that.
Are they?
There is, there is location at Maple.
Yeah.
In Central, so they currently have a, and that's what I said, that's what I initially thought that this was, but there is two, two different monitoring sites. There is a, they have a, I don't know what you would call it, a metal closet essentially, where they have a, a unit that's been pulling samples from off of, off of Central Street, so that should all be removed this summer.
Okay.
And that's, that doesn't have anything to do with this, so I don't want to confuse that, but.
Right, right.
But they are mon, it is Barker Lamar that's monitoring both sites.
They're the ones that do the landfill, okay, same people. Okay, any other questions, counsel? Okay, thank you, Nick. All right, public hearing concession, consideration of voluntary severance of territory.
What's that? Oh, I know what it is, yeah.
This was a request by the properties at 104 and a portion of 105 O'Connell Beach. They're the, I guess 104 is the last remaining cabin site that is located in the city of Burlington. They requested to be severed based on not receiving any city services, and also this is not in our future growth area. They also stated they, there's no city access to get on the property, but instead access via dirt road that goes up through to Tama Road, so they have asked to sever from, the city of Burlington was reviewed, including by our, our attorney, and just did not have an issue staff-wise with this going forward.
I don't have an issue either, but anybody? No? Okay, moving right along. Motion for preliminary adoption, second reading ordinance amending section 170.75 of signs, chapter 170.
No changes from the previous reading. Again, this changes the allowable signage for common freestanding signs that are shared by two or more separate businesses, as well as allows those signs that are shared by two or more separate businesses to be 60 feet in height. All other signs within this district are required to be 50 feet in height. Those were recommended for approval by the planning commission. The only concern staff had was going to the 60 feet, having different sign heights, but...
But how does staff feel now?
The same, that if a use changes or one gets combined, we don't see it too often. I think the properties they're looking at are long, large multi-tenant commercial sites, but if a smaller one went from two to one, then they would have a non-conforming sign at that time, so that's the only concern.
Right.
For the larger sites that they're looking at this, those are large enough that they would never do that, but just looking at all sites on Roosevelt, if a smaller site would go to from two to one businesses, it would have a non-conforming signs, which could remain as long as it stayed there, so.
Yeah. Well, I still don't have a problem. Okay, can we move this to consent or waive? Can we waive it if you?
I wouldn't have a problem with it.
If no one has a question?
Right.
Is that all right, Jim? All right, so next is a resolution approving whiteboxing at the depot for Greer's Restaurant. Who's the presenter on this one?
Good question. I'll let you do it, since you did the resolution for it.
Okay, so in the packet was the resolution and also a letter of support from the Economic Development Advisory Board. Matt Murray, the developer, came to the meeting and made the presentation. Nick was there, went over the, his estimate to what it would cost to whitebox, and as you can see, they recommended approving the project up to the $146,400 to come out of the local option sales stack economic development sub-fund. So we have a balance of about $300,000, not counting what could possibly put it, be put in the budget this next year, so. Any questions? I mean, I don't think anything's changed since they had the presentation to you, what was that, a month ago, two months?
No, the only thing that would go along with that, they did have their request that you see it as a, as an additional piece in there, that if you're going to be using a portion of the funds for this and potentially leasing that space out, they would, in consequence of that, they'd like to see you consider not reducing the economic development funding from the $70,000 down to the $50,000 level.
Right.
But they also understood that this is part of your conversation, that you're trying to figure out how to get a balanced budget.
I have a couple of questions, but counsel, you want to?
I'm just, for the public's sake, what's involved in the whiteboxing and what does that actually mean?
I'll let Nick take that one.
While he's getting ready, Steph, and there's a sentence in here that I'm not sure that is correct. It said that they approved at first was the council was the source of the request to use the economic development funds. I don't know, we said that, did we? Didn't we say we wanted them to consider?
He wanted them to consider the request.
Yeah.
That was the source of them, of it going to them. I don't, if it needs to be rewarded to...
Well, I mean, that's their minutes, I mean, that's what they put in, but I just think I didn't...
Yeah, the letter of support won't be included on the resolution next week, but...
I do have a question about that, too, but I'm going with Nick's presentation here.
Based on the estimate, the, these are the types of things that would include whiteboxing, but we need to sit down, if this is approved, to come up with the scope of work, of what is included in that. From what I have on there, it means bringing electrical over, bringing gas over, water, sewer, and then doing the things I have described up there. So we would have to come up with the scope of what needs to be done, have to probably hire someone, in all likelihood, a cleaner who has done the rest of the depot project to come up with a set of blueprints and go out to bid with this. But also work with Mr. Murray on these items, so.
There are some differences that were in place between what Mr. Murray was asking for and what Nick has come up with. I think the items in the box are those things that were...
Those are, those are things that were provided me, to me from a contractor. The things highlighted in red that are struck out are things that I had initially had in there, and then those items, those dollar figures that you see are actually reduced from the $87,000 to show the $73,000. Sorry, this is just an Excel spreadsheet that isn't very formalized by any means, but ultimately, those things that are below that box, sprinklers, plumbing indoor, new lateral, replacement pavement, and new flooring, those are things that I'll use between engineering estimates and myself to come up with. And of the things that Mr. Murray and I discussed, the things in the red are things that he would be taking care of.
Some of the costs down below are items above and beyond what Mr. Murray had developed as well. For example, the lateral, the need for a lateral is one that he has questioned, but Nick, in looking at a facility with, from I guess a couple of different perspectives, one, the size of a grease trap that you would need for what was done, and whether that could be interior or exterior, you're looking at the need to have that be exterior?
Correct. Dirk, per our code, if you have fryers, a grease trap of above 500 gallons is required in contacting, in talking to our building inspector. No one makes 500 gallon, they make 1,000 gallon or higher, or they do make the smaller portable one. So that's, that's partial, part of the reason why I went exterior, but I don't believe, I shouldn't say it like that, I think it's in our best interest to look at putting a lateral outside in, in the case, if a grease trap is required, it should be outside for maintenance work, but a lateral to go underneath the building, I don't think it's in our best interest to do that.
The existing lateral is under the building and...
I don't know if there is one, to be honest.
If there is one.
If there is one.
So as they went to look at this, they are putting together cost, Nick has, and his department, put together cost estimates based on the need to run a new lateral across the parking lot, and as you're talking about running it across the parking lot, that means you have the digging and the repaving associated with that as well, which adds a significant amount to the cost estimate. It also, the numbers you came up with, you put a fairly significant contingency in it?
Correct. I put 20% contingency. Given the project with the rest of the depot, I felt it was a, a good safe number to make sure that we get everything done with this project that needs to be done. That's, that's my biggest fear is, is we come up with, you know, maybe it only does cost $120,000, but budgeting $120,000, then to have it cost $130,000, I would, I would, I would rather have more money budgeted for it than not, so. Hence the 20%. It's probably, you know, overly optimistic, not optimistic, pessimistic would probably be the better word.
I, I like to call that conservative.
Conservative.
Or realistic.
Yeah. The only thing I would point out is that this is really no different than what any other person that has commercial property for rent would do for a, for a tenant. If they didn't do it and required the tenant to put that in, the rents would be considerably less than what Mr. Murray's gonna be paying for this, so I, I'm not, I don't have a concern with this. It's, it's common practice for this type of business.
Well, and, and things like the sidewalk, those are probably not things that are considered whiteboxing, but in, in order to make that space a, a rentable space, sidewalk work has to be done, so that's why it's included in the whiteboxing figures.
What else, Ms. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Fleming? What, to me, as I was thinking about this, the bigger question is, not necessarily whether we do this for Greer's, but whether we would do this for anybody to make this space available. Let's say a dog groomer wanted to come in and use this spot, or a real estate agent, or pick any, pick any business. Would we do this just to make this space available?
I'd like to think so.
Or what else would we use it for? Or would it be best just to amputate that part of the building, fill in the wall? I don't know. And, or is this just an ongoing money pit? We just keep putting money in, money in, money in, where do we get? So, I think that, to me, that's the bigger question. Setting aside the Greer's idea for a minute, are we willing to spend the money to make that space usable? Because right now, it's like a bad appendix, you know, so.
Well, I, I think that question should have been asked before we put the new windows in and redone the great room.
But that was the, yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I think, I think now with the momentum that's going and with Mr. Murray and his investors ready to, to do an adaptive reuse to that building, and after the letter that, or after the editorial that Randy Mueller wrote this weekend, I think that, on, on redevelopment of historic properties, that it is the right thing to do, but I think our next step should be a way to market that building and get it out of the hands of the city and into the private sector, so that they can really make something out of the rest of that building. It's even been suggested that they do a condominium, one gentleman had suggested that we do a condominium, but I say get it out of our hands and get it back on, get it on the tax rolls and back where it was at in 1992, and look for somebody to develop it. Right now, the time's ripe, I mean, there's a lot of development going on in the downtown, and, and I think there's, there's possibilities out there, so if we could put together a, some kind of incentive package and, you know, a tax abatement or, or whatever it might be to, and, and get that property into private hands, I think that would work for me. And by, by improving the building, that makes it that much more valuable.
That was my point, gonna be my, my point, by, by doing this, it makes it more marketable.
Yeah. But who knows? Matt may become so wealthy at selling hamburgers that he buys the whole building.
I wouldn't bet on it.
He's pretty ambitious.
I don't know about this $146,000, though, it seems like a lot.
But you've got, you've got to have sewer, you've got to have electric, the water might, might be the difference, but if you had a dog groomer in there, you'd have to have, you'd have to have water. If, if you had any other kind of business, it'd probably have to have its own bathroom, or they would want one. This is, this is no different than what other developers are doing in the downtown right now to market their buildings, or happen to whitebox them. I'm speaking firsthand, that it's, it's, it's a common practice. If you want tenants, that's what you have to do. I think it's a good move.
So I...
It should be just the first, should be just the second step in the three-step process.
So I guess I'm asking the question is, do we need to say whiteboxing for Greer's Restaurant? Can we just say whiteboxing that part? Because what happens if, if Greer's Restaurant doesn't go in there, then, then are we still okay with?
I, I think that what it was brought forward with was for the specific purpose for the restaurant development. And that's, I think, what the Economic Development Committee approved it based off of, so their recommendation is based off of the project that was before them.
Well, we're not doing that much, are we, that pertains just to a restaurant? I mean, a lot of this stuff's pretty basic, and I mean...
That was, that's the whole, the design of a whiteboxing is to try to do the kind of expenditures that would be necessary regardless.
Regardless of the...
So I guess that speaks to my point, whether we really need to say for Greer's Restaurant. Anyway, I'm just asking questions.
Good questions.
Anything else?
This is a workstation.
Anything else?
No, and we're working.
Stephanie, you want to add anything else?
No.
Okay.
Did you want me to change anything, or?
Counsel?
No, I think based off of what the Economic Development Board approved the money for, it should just remain.
Good point.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. Councilwoman Wilson says she needs to leave at 5:15, but Nick, did you have something else? Is there something you specifically want to be here before, some topic you want to, you just want to keep going down the list?
Yeah, we could just...
Okay, all right, we'll just keep going. On the consent agenda, then, we have a resolution approving agreement with Beanster and Kim for engineering services for sanitary sewer rate study.
Good evening, I'm Leo Foley with Beanster and Kim. So I guess the first one is the sanitary sewer rate study. What we plan on doing is looking at five years of record. We basically go back five years, and we look at all of your loans, whether you have state revolving fund, your bonds, try to figure out how much income versus expenses, what is the state of the existing sanitary sewer fund. Then we, what we do is we, we move into the next phase, where we go to the wastewater treatment plant, the collection system, we start to look at the DNR regulations and say, what's coming down the pike? What's the next five years gonna look like from needs? Along with all the operation and maintenance, what do you guys got planned? Things I know of are some of the wastewater treatment plant, some of the sewer separation costs. So then we, we build a model, and from there, we look at your water rates. We know the water rates are changing, we know the, how they collect money for the water, how's that gonna impact the sanitary rates? Because they're based off of, based off the water. They are putting some new meters in, so in the, I think apartments and things like that, they'll start to have meters. How does that gonna affect collections of, of water? We then, once we get that, we try to make sure that not only does the sewer system, the sewer fund balance, but we want to make sure that you have a pretty good contingency, and we'll work with whoever your finance people are to say what they want. Typically, you know, one, two, three million dollars are gonna want in contingencies, just so you're able to handle certain loans, maybe more. After that, we look at communities similar size. How do they bill? How are you gonna bill? How do you bill currently? And then how do your bills compare to everybody else? And then we give you a recommendation and a final report. So that's the sanitary side of it. Are there any questions for the sanitary rate study?
Is this gonna include our future needs, expansion?
Yes, so it looks at, we look at the second, first thing we do is we go back five years, and then we take, we go out five years. So we look at five years. Like I said, I know of some of your sanitary wastewater treatment plant, but we'll get together and try to figure out more. We know about sewer separation, but there's things coming down that I'm sure maybe a lot of you haven't thought a lot about, nutrient reduction strategy type things in the state. That's gonna come in the next five years. It's, I don't know, is it in your permit now, Don?
To do the...
To do the study. So it doesn't say whether you have to implement, but it tells you you have to do a study, so we'll, we'll at least put that part of it in there, and you start to, it's a good, it's a good tool to have for, for that. So we do look about five years ahead, that's really about as far ahead as we're gonna get with this type of a study.
This is being done at the same time that, where are we at on a sewer master plan, Nick?
Tomorrow morning.
So we're trying, we're, tomorrow morning, we'll have a meeting staff-wise to talk about getting an RFP out, or is that what we're doing? I have no clue, I can't remember from one to another anymore. Is it getting RFP out on doing a storm sewer master plan, or are we working just directly with H.R. Green? With H.R. Green doing the Maslou straight, stage, you corrected me in my thought process on this. We're looking to tag off of that, sorry, Beanster and Kim, on the sewer master plan.
You win some, you lose some.
We wanted to get these out in conjunction with each other. One thing we have problems with in our system that we've, that have already been identified, where we have some potential bottlenecks that we want to make sure that we get addressed, along with future growth, but then with the EPA, the stormwater planning grant that we're underway with this year, we want to get all of these studies put together at the same time. Part of that being that if we're gonna do one, we want to make sure that they're comprehensive and all hit together. The sewer rate study is fairly well timed actually for that, because as we put these together and are trying to figure out where, what are our needs gonna be, how are we gonna pay for them, and how are we gonna design a rate structure to accomplish that. The other thing for timing on this, you're partway through the rate study on the water department?
We're partway through on the water department, correct.
And if you think about what our community is for our billing procedures, we are unique in the state for how our system is set up, so tagging off of the study that they are already doing on the water department for rebalancing their rate structure, it's a good time to look at, make sure that we have an appropriate rate structure in place, too, and you, especially when we're talking about the uniqueness of our billing.
Most communities have residential meters in every house.
Right.
And you, and then you base your sewer rates on the residential water use, so we have a little juggling to play here.
Yeah.
We've done it quite a bit.
So, and the second part of your study that goes in with this, as, as we talk about what we've done traditionally with sewer and stormwater, we've got two sets, sets of rates, but they essentially dump into one bucket, and what we'll do through this process is figure out what's the appropriate balance between those two buckets, and I would assume at the end, we'll be looking at establishing them as two separate buckets, and they may still both go to pay for some combined projects, for example, with the combined sewer separation, but they will become two separate buckets as we move through this. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. You'll end up with a stormwater utility, or at least a proposal for a stormwater utility. And that utility, there's three or four different main ways you do it, but primarily, you get down to either land use in the parcels or just parcels, or the most fair way to do it typically is impervious. How much impervious area? You have about 1,223 parcels that are not your standard residential. They're commercial, they're, you know, little strip malls, those are the hard ones, so we'll have to concentrate on those. What we end up doing is coming up with an equivalent residential unit, and you get a cost for stormwater, and you try to do it as fair as all. We've done, for instance, in Des Moines, somebody calls and complains, and that will happen, you'll get a complaint. Typically, we want to be able to give you a map for every single one of them. Every one could pull that map up, take a look at it, and say, this is the impervious, and it just makes it very fair. I won't say the problems go away easily, but at least when you have a solid standing and you can provide them, sometimes people even put it on their website themselves, so if somebody can just go look at my resident and pull it up and say, here's what the unit is, here's the calculation, here's how they calculated what, what your cost is gonna be. here's the calculation, here's how they calculated what, what your cost is going to be. So that, that goes, it's a lot of legwork to do it right, but I think if we get it done right, it, it generally serves you great for the future.
Something that, uh, I don't think it was you, I think it was Ted, Ted Pacers from Beanster and Kim as well, at the Des Moines office. One of the things that I think he had suggested was the idea of that, setting up for this process, a, a citizens group to be involved, uh, have representation from business, et cetera. What was your, what was the thought process behind that?
We, we have done that before. After we, kind of after we get our arms around it, we would then come back to them and say, here's how it looks. And we set up a citizens-type group to help with that. And I, I like that.
And part of that is just a communication strategy. Because if you're going to get a class that's going to have a completely different rate structure than what they've had in the past, you want them to know what's going on and why, and be informed as it's going along.
We've, we've, we've probably set up 20 or 30 of them in the state of Iowa. The first, the first major one done was Des Moines. And I think a lot of you have met Bob Beanster. He actually set it up. So from a legal perspective, he's very good at making sure legally. But I think like Jim said, Ted, Ted, Ted's very, very good at making sure that the community understands what it is. And especially the, the commercial and, uh, like the schools and churches and all of those, so they understand it. But the costs aren't going away. The costs of doing projects and the cost for stormwater and, um, you know, your sanitary separation, a lot of that's going to be stormwater costs.
You guys good?
I did hear the EPA was, they're, they were considering a bill to do away with the EPA, though.
It's true.
To do it, to do away with the EPA?
Yes. All in favor?
I, I also heard that there's a trillion dollar, a trillion dollar stimulus bill being proposed. So, I mean, a lot of those type of things might help in the future, but...
Where would you find a trillion dollars?
Where did you hear that?
Certainly not going to...
Just borrow.
What'd you say, Nick? Take it out of your salary? Everybody's in good spirits tonight. Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you, Liz.
Uh, number two, resolution approving agreement with Burlington Steamboat Days for BSD event operations for concessions at the Port of Burlington Building. Stephanie?
So this is the agreement that we had talked about, um, a couple of weeks ago when Burlington Steamboat Days was here. They agreed to the $8,000 annual rental fee. So I updated that, but basically the contract is the same. There's not that many changes from the previous contract. It's still a one-year. We did limit the carnival hours, so the carnival will be closing by 10 o'clock. And that was, again, worked out with Steamboat Days. So other than that, they'll still be reimbursing us for the overtime capped at 5,000 and all the, um, security overtime that we pay for fire and police. They'll reimburse us for that. So, does anybody have any questions?
But what's the, what's the total difference in what the agreement was prior to their request?
Um, I think about $2,500 less in rent that we'll receive because they were paying a little over 10,000. And we were, um, requesting that to go up by 3%, which was like 11,100. Yeah, that's what they paid last.
Okay.
Yeah, so about, yeah, $3,000 less to our general fund of rent revenue, though, that'll come in this year.
Otherwise, last session, when, the last time we negotiated this, one of the major changes we made was a limitation on the hours that we provided for labor.
Remember that?
Property maintenance.
That was something from property maintenance that they, they were, I think, really the change of the number of days of the event in and of itself made it to where that was something that, uh, was fairly attainable. And that we, we weren't looking to make any changes to that this year. And I know that everyone was really conscious about how much time was being spent, especially the first time that we were really tracking it to, but there was a high level of concern about the hours. We were well within it, so...
Good deal. Is there, is, is there any difference in this as to what we charge everybody else?
Yes. This is significantly less.
Yes.
Again, I think that...
Well, the figure that I'm, I was comparing Steamboat Days as to how we run it out for civic music. And civic music pays $2,000 a day, which I think is even discounted because they're kind of a legacy event. But I'd have to look up the current rates to see what the average person coming off the street to get the building for the whole day would be. So, yeah, this is substantially less. They do get the building the week before the event and it takes them at least a week after to clean it up. So I know Venue Works is out of the building for like a total of 14 days, that they can't rent it at all. And so, and in exchange, we'll get the $8,000 for that rental.
You guys good?
I think that's where the, the $2,000 a day, that's where that came from.
Yeah, I was, we were just comparing what...
If we were to have, use our standard rental rates, it would be, I think, a significant amount higher than the 24,000.
Yes.
That also is, we don't have anything else that, that charge, or that we do an event like this.
Right, that's that many days, yeah.
So it's kind of difficult to make those kind of comparisons.
Right.
You guys good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. Number three, it's a resolution approving of a memorandum of understanding between Des Moines County, uh, Des Moines County Secondary Roads and the City of Burlington. Nick McGregor?
Please forgive my candor back there. Eric is, is putting up a map right now. This memorandum of understanding is, uh, is, uh, an amendment essentially to the 2080 agreement that the county and the city and secondary roads, um, entered into in 1999. What this map shows is kind of a breakdown. And in, in the agreement, it has more of a formalized term of, of whose responsibility for snow removal maintenance and, um, you know, regular street maintenance. The specific roads that, that meet city-county boundaries and then who they belong to. This is pretty typical or pretty similar to what it was last year. So just a renewal of this understanding.
Good?
Yep.
Thank you.
Nick, you're all right. I don't care what Farno set about you. Next, we got a resolution approving urban revitalization tax exemption pursuant to Chapter 404 of the State Code of Iowa Tax Abatements. Steph?
Okay, this is our annual, um, approval that, um, these are the people that have applied for tax abatements, um, in the past year. So we have a deadline of February 1st to get them into the city. Then they are presented to you to be approved. And then after next week's meeting, they get sent to the county and then they will actually come off the individual's taxes. So in your packet, just lists out, Exhibit A of the resolution, lists out all the new homes and residential renovations and commercial properties. Just for reference, we've put in the prior year amount, so you can see, you know, the trend, which you can see on the new homes. We have, um, two less homes, but the property values are a lot higher this year. And those values are just based on the permit they take out. So they could be assessed at a lot different value too. This is just their estimate that they've given us to get a permit, so... Does anybody have any questions, or?
Good. Satisfied?
One of my good friends probably wouldn't appreciate if I moved to delete his house.
Oh.
Probably not.
Probably wouldn't be a good friend then.
No. Maybe not.
Next, we have set date for public hearing for March 6th, 2017, for consideration of fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget.
I'd like to make a comment on the budget if I can. I put my thoughts in writing. I'd just like to comment that, uh, I know time is flying by and we got to get on this and get it termed up. First of all, I, I've really spent some time looking at the budget that was presented to us. And very frankly, I was very impressed. We had locked in wage increases of, I think, 2% or whatever it was.
Two and a quarter.
Two, yeah, and so forth. And yet, the budget presented to us showed us that no tax increase was needed. And I think that's commendable. I think a lot of your department ads and the city manager did a great job. But then we came up with the idea, because of the seriousness of public safety in our community. And so I'm recommending that we bring in two police officers, a firefighter, and a part-time person on the nuisance side of things. And to do that, uh, the only prudent thing to do is to go ahead and increase taxes by two and a half percent. And that would cover most of the cost. And then I've suggested a couple of cuts. And I'm not locked in on those if somebody has a better idea. But I had 20,000 for the Economic Development Fund to be cut and taking the library, keeping it at the current year's budget. Doing that would balance, we'd be paying for what we're doing. And I think we'd be, we'd be doing good business here, let's put it that way.
Sorry, would this tax, uh, increase cover then the, the officers who are now covered under the COPS grant?
You would get out to year five in that sheet, you would need to, regardless of adding staff, year five is going to cost a significant amount more when the grant goes away.
Councilman Lamingu.
Yes.
I, I think this is, uh, well thought out. I, um, I don't have issues with it except for the fact that you're doing a property tax increase this year. I don't think it's out of bounds. I don't. I, I just, uh, I lean over on Tim's side. I, I still, I still would like to try to find a way to do, do this without looking at a property tax increase this year. I'd like to give it a year to see, to do, to actually go through with that study to see if there's some services that we can continue with, but cut. I, I just, I'd like to see if we can, if we can make this happen. I'd like to try, I'd like to give it one more year to try to do this. And I, I, I was talking to somebody and they said, well, Shane, you're just kicking the can down the road. I'm kicking it to myself. I'm going to be here next year. I'm not going anywhere, so, um, and I'm kicking it to you, Annie, but you're going to be here with me for sure.
Thanks.
And I don't, I'm not sure how the, everything else is going to pan out or who else is going to be interested, though I love you guys. I'm, I'm willing to wait and see. I'm willing to try to make this thing happen, to get the personnel that was asked. But to find a way to make it happen and to see, uh, to see what we have to do next year. I'm not, uh, precious about it, but I'm, I'm, I'm still, I'm still with you, Tim, on that.
So, uh, Mr. Fardol, a two and a half percent increase would be about 40 cents, would that be about, right?
Correct. Right at 40 cents, 39, 80 or something like that.
40 cents. Well, my personal thought is, I, I can mention the other night, I'm not going to support the plan that's in place right now because I think it puts us in a spot where we're headed down the slippery slope where we were six years ago.
Yeah.
Covering things that we don't have money for, borrowing money from one place to cover something else, playing the, I don't want to call it a shell game, but it basically is. You're moving money from here to there to cover something that you don't have money for. And I started out these budget talks with the idea that I didn't want to raise property taxes, but I'm at the point now where if we're going to have increased public safety, and you all didn't like my plan, I think his is the most responsible, Mr. Fleming is the most responsible to do things correctly. So I'd appreciate if you would join us.
Councilman? Please. I, I agree. Bob Flemings is the most appropriate way of handling, uh, the, uh, hiring of two officers, one firefighter, and one part-time nuisance person if we had done due diligence and, and everything else. And being, is, being that it may very well be a shell game in your eyes and everybody else's, this shell game allows us, demands us to do what's appropriate and that's to spend the next four or five months going through department by department and finding any cuts that, that many in the public believe there are. I'm not sure that there are or there aren't. But, uh, looking for all of the cuts first, logical, non-emotional cuts that can be made. And finding those first and then raising taxes. And I know that we're going to have to raise taxes one way or another. Either, either property taxes or, or a franchise fee or, uh, somewhere else. I know it's going to have to happen to give the departments what they need. But I want to put everybody's feet to the fire to, to do this. Otherwise, we're, we're just sat here and next year, we'll be, we'll, we'll, we'll be in the exact same boat.
No, we won't.
Well, and I, I, before I, before I get out of here, I do want to say one thing. When we, when we do go through, we need to think about the future expenses. We have, uh, employees covered by grants right now. What happens when the grants end? Those employees will have to go away unless we think about what we can do now to prepare for that, so they don't go away. Because I think that's, I mean, to me, that's so important. We have these employees who have gone through training and have valuable knowledge now. Why would we feel the need to have to get rid of them? We need to prepare to keep them. That's...
Well, I agree. I mean, who's saying that we wouldn't do that? I mean, I don't...
Well, I'm saying that then there would be an additional tax increase later on. What, what year are we in on the COPS grant?
We just start the second year?
Second year.
Yeah, I think we'll...
We're close, we're just about to the end of the first.
At the end, we should, I mean, we'll qualify for that. Basically, about the only extension you can get is to train personnel. And when we first got the grant, our personnel weren't trained. And it took us about six months. And I'm referring back to 2011, 2012 when we got the grant. We had the same exact timing. The grant's issued in October, but you can't get an academy class until January or April. And so we applied for an extension. We're awarded that. So, I mean, technically, we're in year two. It's a three-year grant. But if we get the extension that I, I think that we would be entitled to, I mean, now it'd give us an additional six months, so...
But we're basically coming right up, I mean, really coming right up on the end of it.
Yeah, you would have this fiscal year, next fiscal year, and then maybe a six-month extension.
Yeah, to me, that's not a lot of time. I mean, to really plan and think about those kinds of things.
There's also a maintenance of that one position, or well, of both positions for the first year after.
For the first year after.
Because you have to have, you have to maintain positions for...
Correct.
For a year after.
Yeah.
Correct.
And I'm not debating whether we need to do it, Mr. Scott's saying it. I'm just saying that this is the more responsible way to get there, to do it. And, and still do the, the in-depth, I'm all, I'm, I'm all in for that. As far as I'm sure, we don't do, we can't do anything until we do this, what you're talking about, an in-depth analysis. Well, what I'm, what I'm agreeing with Councilman Fleming is, this is the most responsible way to do it.
Yeah, and we still can go ahead and...
Yeah, I, I think that's, uh...
I just, I, I don't want to end up raising taxes every other year, every three years.
I don't either.
Who does?
Well, that's good.
Well, yeah, I mean, nobody does, but...
You can't anticipate all the increases that might be coming up in the future.
We, we can, just say all of them, but some of them we can't.
And some of them we can, and some of them we can save money on too. I mean, uh, all I know is we have a legal obligation to come up with a budget and we ought to be able to pay for it. That's all I'm saying.
Exactly.
I'm not against going in and studying things and all, that's fine. Although I have a lot of respect for the city, what they've done so far. I mean, uh...
Well, I, I, I think this study has to go beyond the city. I think we need to hire an, uh, an outside company, just like we're doing for the, for the sewer facility. And we need to charge them with finding, uh, where, what's going on? Why, why are we different than other cities, if we are different than other cities? Are we doing everything the exact same way? Is there something that we're doing that we shouldn't be doing? Or is there something we're not doing that we should be doing? And, you know, it, it was, you know, the recommendation come and said, let's, let's cut $50,000 from the library. Or let's, let's not give them the two and a half percent increase. That, uh, that drove a lot of emotions. There was a lot of people that, uh, sent emails and showed up to the, to the council meeting. And for me, I don't know if that puts a, uh, a real burden on the library or if those, if...
Before you go, so are you still stuck on what you three agreed to last week?
Yes.
Okay. End of discussion.
Thank you.
The, um...
What do we have a city, what do we have a city manager for? Good lord, I mean, we have to hire someone on the outside to come in and tell him how to run these departments and save money? I find that insulting.
See, I, I, I don't...
That's not, that's not, it's not meant to be insulting at all.
Not right.
Well, are you saying that, that... Are you saying that, that, that hiring someone to do the study for, for the, uh,
Entirely different.
Sewers department, for sewers and storm sewers and doing that sort of thing? This, I'm talking about doing some in-depth, in-house studies for all, not in-house, but of the house, for all the departments and see if there, if there is a way of saving money or not. If it's just going to be up to us to make that decision, or based on recommendations from him, then it becomes, then it becomes emotional, more emotional.
You're looking for someone from the outside to come in, and then you can say, don't be emotional because this guy's an expert.
There's still going to be some emotions, but we're going to know the facts. There's going to be people that are going to come up and say, you know, here's, we're going to say, here's the facts. They're going to say, well, don't, don't cut this department, don't change the way this one operates, don't, uh, um, I, I, I don't want to say specifics because people are going to think I support that, but I'm going to. Uh, getting rid of, getting rid of trash services, we know it, and going private. I'm not saying I support that, but that's one, uh, that's one area that we need to study. Are we spending more for trash service than what's necessary? What are other communities doing?
That's, and that's where.
Are they saving anything? Now, it's, there, there's.
Why don't we just ask the city manager to do that? I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm sure you don't, Bob, because you're ready to raise taxes at the drop of a hat, anytime anything comes up.
Oh, yeah, I don't care. That's right. I don't care about taxes.
All right, all right, Jim.
Well, that's the impression I get.
Oh, gee.
We're gonna, we're gonna, let's move slower.
Just one other comment.
It's too bad.
One other comment I'd like to make about that emotional thing. We were all here, I don't think you were here, Mr. Scott, back there five years ago, and we were trying to get this thing righted. And we were suggesting we rem, eliminate a couple of positions. And we had a room full of people, emotional, saying you can't cut that position. But we looked at it and we did it. So, you know, I, I don't necessarily go along with that, with the whole emotional thing. You know, it's our job. We're supposed to be doing that.
That's right.
So.
I'd like to say.
Anyway, you know.
When I, when I, when we got on, we did, this conversation did come up, and I don't know where it started, but this came up a couple of years ago that we were going to look into departments to see if it was something that we could, we could sustain to do. I, I was, I was hoping that the study was going to tell us once and for all whether, uh, whether or not the, the city should continue in a specific service, or whether it would be beneficial for us to cut services. To me, that was the, the, that was the call that I was, the cry that I was getting, not that Jim wasn't doing his job looking for cuts. I mean, everybody feels like they're professionals and can make perfect cuts or whatever. I got somebody saying do two percent across and all of this. What I don't know is, would it be better for the city to say, hey, we need to let go of the service and let, let somebody private do it? And I would like to see a, a study to do that. That's what I thought that we were looking to, looking to see, so we could settle this once and for all and bite the bullet. If, if we find out that we need to hang on to all the services that we have, we need to just accept that. Uh, but at least we would know from a study. That, that's what I thought we were going to be moving forward with.
The bottom line is, there's no real change from last week, Dan. Thank you for your proposal, and I agree with you.
So where's the money?
It's not a bad proposal.
How are we going to pay these police officers and the firemen, I wonder?
That's, that's a big question, because if there's not going to be any support for it, then we're right back at ground zero.
If there's no support from who?
If there's no support for doing an in-depth study and finding out why cities pay, uh, communities of our size pay between seven hundred thousand and one point four million dollars for library services. Or, uh, or, uh, public works departments, um, one point two million to two point nine million, communities our size. What's the difference? And, and I know some of it is because not all the funding that, that we, we fund uh, our health insurance and everything under that department, others have a separate account for their, for their health part, for their health costs. But I don't, I don't know if, um, I, I don't, I don't know how, if that's the reason why we're paying so much more for services or so much less for services. And then, are, are, do we have departments where we've got too many chiefs and not enough Indians, or vice versa? Do we have, uh, do we, can we do engineering outside of the city, or do, or are we best to keep the engineering like we have it in-house? I don't know. I, I think those are things that we need to, uh, that we need to find out.
Well, that's a bummer that Andy left.
In the meantime, I think we have to pay our bills.
Well, uh, it didn't sound like we're going to, uh, make any movement on this, I guess. And, and he's gone, but she did give her consent with, with what Tim went with, uh, before she left, so I'm going to have to roll with that, Jim.
The budget that, um, is set to go forward with a public hearing, Stephanie has updated documents. Well, not all the way through, but kind of pending where things were tonight, but they've gotten at least partway through for updating documents based off of our last budget meeting. Um, a couple of things or caveats in regards to that. Um, the way that it will be presented after some, after the discussions, we'll put, from the sale of the manor property, um, a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of that, we've tentatively put to have come into the general fund. Um, you were talk, had discussed having the hundred and twenty thousand that was for the, um, golf course. No longer have the golf course improvements done out of hotel motel, end up having the manor cover that. Well, it's easier in our, in our system if we just leave the manor to be funded out of, uh, or the golf course to be funded out of hotel motel funds.
Exactly.
And just have a direct payment to the general fund for that amount. One of the other key discussions that was, that we have right now differently than how you talked about, um, I have it set that we still get the parking lot done for the, um, police building. Uh, the fifty thousand of that, uh, to be funded with, again, out of the, the manor sale. Based off of the last discussion. It's not funded out of, I think it was local option sales tax that was set up to be done out of. Um, that amount will transfer over to the general fund like you talked about, but still keep the, that parking lot in. If that's not your desire, we can remove that, because that would be different than what you talked about last budget meeting.
Leave it in, leave it in.
Was that the only, was that the?
That's the only change outside of just changing how, how we're showing, all the projects are the way that you had talked about having them.
Except for the parking lots come out of lost.
Yep. The parking lot would be funded from the manor property, it's previously out of lost. You eliminated it last week. We'd still like to keep it in, know if that's okay.
I did not eliminate it.
Please do.
Yeah, please do. There you go, chief.
Okay.
Um, oh, and one thing that was mentioned, um, I think there was some discussion on the, our budget on our website within OpenGov. That has not been updated to get to reflect the changes, the, the additional staffing and everything that was, that was approved last week. Uh, they were kind of waiting until after we got through tonight and making sure that we were, that every, that there weren't going to be any changes to anything. And this is what was actually going to be sent, uh, for a public hearing. So, I don't know if that'll be updated by tomorrow, but over the course of the next couple of days, OpenGov will be, uh, updated for the FY eighteen budget to reflect the changes that have been discussed. So that will get out there, it's just not out there yet.
So what about that study? Can we, can we put that to bed? Are, I mean, are we satisfied with, with at least moving forward with the study to seeing if there's?
Yeah. Can we talk about that later?
I think you need to.
I'll come back in two weeks on something more, uh,
See that?
More formal and.
Yeah.
Something we can discuss.
You can't.
The only other, the only other question that I have is, is the council committed to finding a funding for the six police officers and six firefighters if we get the grant, or three firefighters if we don't, and the one nuisance person? Are we just talking, have you made up your minds that all we need is two police officers and one firefighter and the nuisance?
I'm making up my mind that we have a fiscal year to deal with.
Yeah, man.
And I wish I could plan the second, third part, but I can't. I might not even be here. So, I'm hoping we can add more police and more fire and so forth. But all I'm saying, first step is the two plus one plus the other, and pay for it now. And hopefully we can find ways to get more efficient and all, and add more later. I mean, I guess I find it hard to lock in specifically on a budget for this coming year and looking out three and four years. I mean, yes, we have to look forward, but we can't make any commitments. The same five guys aren't going to be here. So who knows what's going to happen? I don't know. All I know is we have a responsibility now to get a budget put in now. And we ought to be paying for the improvements we've already agreed to. Amen. Can we go home now?
Uh, no, we still have some discussion items. We're going to move forward and go ahead and get them knocked out.
But as far as the idea of a study, I think we need to talk about that more in depth. You can't just make a decision like that in fifteen minutes.
Well, we're, I mean, we're in a work session, we can't make a decision now, but.
I was looking to see if there's any support for it.
Okay, for the record, I do, um, one hundred percent. Brownfield Assessment Project, Impact Seven G.
Good evening. Good discussion up here. Boy, I'm telling you.
A lot of fun in Burlington, that's how we do it.
Um, this relates to a lot of that discussion too. I mean, it relates to, um, what we're talking about with Brownfields. As I mentioned, I think to the council before, what we're talking about is economic.
Can you give us your name to?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I do have a slide here on that too, but right up front, my name's Mike Fisher from Impact Seven G, Vice President. I'm also here with Mike Dolan, um, from Impact Seven G, who's a project manager. Mike has been actively working on the Dresser-Rand site, uh, and cleaning up that site.
Yes, yeah.
Buildings, um, underground contamination, um, tank issues on that site as well. So, um, what we're here to discuss today is a little bit about the big picture goal associated with Brownfield's redevelopment. Um, I'm sorry here, um, as well as specific objectives that apply to dollars that the city has been awarded from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for addressing issues surrounding contaminated sites um, that are limiting progress in my mind, limiting, um, in, increased tax revenues and employment, um, in the city. So i- it's a broader initiative that we're talking about here, but I'm going to be, our goal here today is to, is to provide a little information on the specific objectives on the grants that the city obtained. Um, real simply, up there you'll see some pictures of the Dresser-Rand site before and after. Um, and if anyone who's drawn, who's been out there, um, the big difference in the last two years on that site.
Amen.
Um, and now we can actually get some use out there. And by getting a use out there, hopefully we can attract some tax revenue as well associated with property tax. So Brownfield's related, this isn't a one-year initiative, this isn't a two-year initiative, this is a ten and twenty-year initiative. So I've been working in some communities on this for twenty, going on twenty years for some of them. And what we're seeing is a ten, twenty years out, we are seeing a significant increase in property tax revenues from better utilizing the properties and creating avenues for the private sector to come in and do business in the community. Okay? Limiting redevelopment, um, limiting factors. So what we're trying to do is remove factors to prevent people from bringing in business and those types of things. Similar discussion you had with the depot project. So, um, the EPA assessment grants, you've got two hundred thousand for hazardous substances and two hundred thousand for petroleum contaminated properties. These are, these are dollars that the city staff went out and applied for from EPA and won. There is no match to these. They are pure dollars that the city is bringing in from the, from the federal government, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to spur economic redevelopment. Um, I will point out, back on that other side, the work plan that the city has established with EPA does identify a certain amount of work, a number of environmental assessments that have to be done, that type of thing, on a given number of properties. And so there's some specific objectives that the city needs to comply with in terms of the work plan that they developed with EPA. Um, again, the, here's the process, you know, again, very simplified. Identify sites um, that have issues that are preventing them from being redeveloped, assess those sites, um, and bring them back on the tax rolls, essentially. And what we want to focus on here is not just any old site out there, um, that someone wants to have an assessment done on. What we want to focus on is those sites that the city's been working on for a number of years to get back on the tax rolls. We want to focus on those sites that have an identified or a vision for some end use out there. Um, because those are the sites, um, where, where we, we bring in a lot of different variables to bring those sites back to an economic reuse. So the big picture goal, I, I mean, real simply, and I, and I think I said this at a previous meeting, but, um, is, is to increase economic value in the city, increase social value in the city, um, as well as the environmental value. There is some environmental benefit here to addressing these sites. Some of these sites, um, have contamination issues associated with past use of chemicals, right? Prior to nineteen seventy, we didn't have a lot of environmental laws. Right? And so some sites had, uh, conditions that today we consider those impeded. The issue we're facing with this, this Brownfields problem is getting capital for a developer, like you're going to probably hear from later on a school site, getting capital for a developer to come in and do something with a property to make it usable. We can't get capital from outside lending sources if we've got large environmental issues or potential environmental issues or perceived environmental issues on these sites, right? So our objective with this Brownfield program is to address those issues such that capital investors aren't afraid to come in and back a property for redevelopment. So the near-term objectives, um, is, um, kind of review an inventory of Brownfield properties in the downtown, um, prioritize those properties, get them assessed. Let's do some environmental site assessments on that, um, and use that data to facilitate, um, the next phase of, of getting that property back on the tax rolls. Maybe it's, you may even have to come in and do some white box improvements, that type of thing, um, to get it, to get the property to move. Um, but again, it's, the whole idea here is not for the city to acquire properties and, and hold those properties and then rent them out. The idea is get them to the point where, let's get them a little bit of stimulus, and let's get them to the point where now private sectors say, gosh, we could really do something with that. I've got this, you know, we've got this great idea, it's consistent with the city's long-term strategies in terms of this district. And boom, all of a sudden, we're seeing some synergies and momentum and an increase in property tax value. Um, this specific grant, the two grants that I'm talking about here, um, the items in red there are what we're, we're setting out to do. Complete Phase One environmental site, site assessments, site assessments, Phase Two site assessments. Um, we're going to conduct some outreach, uh, and we're going to plan for any of those sites that we determine are pretty dirty relative to DNR, the Department of Natural Resource Standards. For those particular sites, we're going to do some planning on how we get those cleaned up and get them back on the tax rolls.
I have a question while you're there. The next point on there was the area-wide planning.
Yes.
Now, that would be comparable to the area-wide planning grant that we had an announcement on?
Exactly, Jim. Yeah, so, again, the EPA, um, also, this, this, this area-wide planning grant that Jim is referring to is an even more difficult, um, funding source to obtain. And the city has been successful in obtaining grants to conduct planning so that we understand where we're going long-term. How are we going to be a twenty-first century sustainable city here in Burlington? And continue to build momentum and increase in our economic base.
And a question I have, did, have we formally signed paperwork on that, Eric, or no?
I, I.
Should be close.
Yeah, I don't.
Should be close. And so this was, these, these funds aren't wide, as widespread as the assessment grants, but it's two hundred thousand dollars, I believe, as well, Jim, um, that is spent to do some really specific planning. And, and your planning funds are directed toward the downtown district primarily, if I'm not mistaken. Um, the municipal improvement district. not mistaken, the municipal improvement district. And that those funds will help determine where we want to focus, we'll kind of use both these monies in synergy to determine where we want to do some of the site assessment work. So, it's, so in all total, it's about $600,000 of work that you're doing on planning and moving properties along that aren't being moved along right now, or that are abandoned or underutilized. So, it's, and again, this is from all outside money coming into, for the city of Burlington. So, this slide just mentions, a bulk of this money on the site assessment grants will be spent on what we call Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One is essentially, it's a research effort, and it's designed to say, what happened at this site? And why won't any developers touch it? Do we have issues here or perceived issues that really aren't issues? And let's put those issues to bed so that developers will come look at this site. The Phase Two site says, if the Phase One says, eh, we've got some things to be concerned about, Phase Two comes in and says, well, let's take a couple samples and see if that's really true or not. And we come in and say, and if the Phase Two says, yeah, we've got some environmental concerns, here's how we deal with them. Maybe we put in a groundwater withdrawal ordinance so that we don't have the potential for contaminants to be exposed anywhere, similar to what was mentioned earlier by Nick. And we put the issue to bed. And we move on, and all of a sudden, we have a developer that can get capital for financing. So, this is the bulk of what that money will be spent on, is these investigations. It's informed decision-making for future use of the properties, is what it is on the environmental front. Does that make sense? Because this is the crux of it. But I think it's important to understand, and I talked a little bit about land use planning, but I think it's important to understand the bigger picture with regard to Brownfields and economic redevelopment, and that this is one piece to this whole puzzle, of which Burlington's been working on for several years. If I'm not mistaken, Jim, the University of Iowa's done some work. EPA came in earlier and did some prioritization and looking at some other properties about two years ago, and this is a continuation of that. So, this process is part of the planning and overall economic redevelopment process in the city, of which we're leveraging as much outside support as we can. And again, what we will also do, we will continue to leverage outside support. We'll continue to leverage other stakeholder support and continue to try to attract private sector investment by pointing out, here's a property, it's been assessed environmentally, it's clean relative to DNR standards and our identified end use. Who's interested in it? What can we do with it? What's the next step after that, now that we've gotten over that hurdle? So, there's a lot of other sources of potential funding for these projects as well that we need to look at from an overall economic development perspective. Benefits of the program, I mentioned some of these, enhanced property tax revenues, facilitate new job growth as much as we can. What this does is utilize existing infrastructure. What we're not doing is going out to, you know, the west side of town and building on and building on into the green fields and the farms. We're reinvigorating our downtown. And what you'll see, even across much of Iowa with communities similar to Burlington, is this is actually real, and it's exactly what's happening to a lot of communities in terms of not just businesses, but residential development coming into the downtown areas as well. And that residential development really makes it much more sustainable for businesses to be downtown, especially on the restaurant side of things and the services side of things for residents. So, it prevents urban sprawl, and ultimately, it also has potential to remove environmental uncertainties. So, you know, there was a study done back in 2014, and there was a sponsor group associated with that study. And really, this is a, and you can read the quote from that study up there, as well as some pictures of beautification of downtown, some things that can be done. This is really ultimately a continuation by city staff of that whole effort. It's not dropping the ball. It's let's get, take it to the next step. Let's keep this thing moving. Let's gain some more momentum. So, happy to take any questions on that. I did cut a little bit out of here. I know there's a lot of other presentations on the agenda tonight that are important, so I, but I wanted to give you the meat of what this is about.
Thank you, Mike.
I was just going to say, a lot of people, younger people that haven't been, that maybe they're too young, they probably don't know all the work that has happened over the years with, that was a big building, you know, a lot of contamination there, and it's good. I was just driving past on my way down here and seeing, you know, grass, you know, growing. You know, the weather was nice. I almost went and did some sunbathing this weekend down there, but I knew that they were going to charge me tax money, so I didn't do that. A lot of good things happening through this project, and Impact 7G's been good to us so far. We hope that does continue.
Well, we appreciate working with the city very much.
One of the questions that I'd had, and why I asked about the area planning grant, EPA has been a topic of discussion at the federal level over the course of the last few weeks. What is the status with these projects in relation to what's going on with, at the EPA level?
The current status is there's a lot of turmoil at the EPA level, as you might expect. We don't have the president's current appointment in place. EPA, there's a lot of uncertainty. There was a hold put on future hiring through grant dollars. So, there was a, if you all recall from the news, there's a hold on federal hiring. What the administration didn't want to see happen was the agencies go hire through their federal contracts indirectly. They wanted to really put a halt on federal hiring, and so, they stopped all grant dollars or hiring through grant dollars. This particular program was actually funded, your cooperative agreement for, that began in fiscal year, federal fiscal year, October 1st, 2017. This was actually completed prior to the current administration. I will say that the ability to get these types of funds in the future could be in jeopardy depending on how things go with the current administration.
And I think that applies to the planning grant, the area planning grant as well, although if we don't have a formal approved contract, I'm not.
It's still a money that was appropriated for fiscal year, 2017, and I believe it's a two-year grant. I believe it was actually appropriated over two years, but it was previously appropriated. So, I don't think the current, regarding the planning grant, that the current hold or bar on future hiring or utilizing those grant dollars applies to those FY $17.
And I guess the point that you need to think about as we move forward, as you're watching the federal level, what happens with, when the, as the appointment process is completed and the new administration starts to figure out what the priorities are going to be for EPA, there's likely to be a much different landscape for what involvement EPA has in different areas.
It is. They're a good partner. We need to constantly reach out to local partners, state partners, as well as, you know, there's the idea out there, too, that at the local level, we need to be more sustainable in thinking about how do we, how do we help manage this situation in the future absent federal funding like this? How do we internally do that? Do we develop some sort of land bank program where we're able to sell off properties, use that money to further fund aggregation and redevelopment? So, I'm throwing this, I'm throwing you a big, big, huge wad of gum here, if you will, but something to think about in the future. Jim brings up a very good point that in the future, not just Burlington, but river communities across the state are going to have to contend with this issue and find other ways to deal with it, I think.
I think you're absolutely right.
So, and there are methods. There's other tools we can use from an economic development perspective. So, just something to think about. Anything else, Jim?
No, I think that's enough of a soapbox on that one.
Well done. Thank you. Appreciate it. And to the other Mikey. Thanks, Mike. Mike G.
I didn't have to get up, so I was sitting here.
Sit down, relax.
I'll take it.
Okay. Next, we have Apollo School Redevelopment Proposal, Midwest Cornerstone Property Management. Zach James.
Good evening. Zach James, Planning Director, Southeast Iowa Planning Commission. And I'm not sure who put the agenda together, but I think they gave me about the perfect segue into this topic here. Is that you, Jim, or is that somebody else?
It certainly wasn't me, so.
So, somebody smarter than Jim gave me the perfect segue.
I did that, I did that, Zach.
You're welcome, Zach. And I didn't even realize until he just started talking. I'm like, oh, this is perfect.
This is an awfully high standard if you're talking about being smarter than him.
I know. Somebody is, they're up there.
Or taller than me.
But I mean, and this is, this is a good example of project, but I want to go back to even, because I'm a member of Downtown Partners, but the process we went through where the city acquired that 300 Washington building and turned it over to Downtown Partners and they go, going through the process to redevelop that. I mean, that's the perfect example of the type of thing they're talking about with this Brownfield funding, where, you know, you've got a property that has environmental concerns, DPI right now going through the process to get this cleaned up and get it turned over to somebody else. So, that's a perfect example. And then, I think Apollo School here is another great example. So, I'm going to do a quick, just kind of background on the process, how we got here, and give you some information, too, about people we heard back from through the request for proposal process. And then, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Anderson with Midwest Cornerstone, and he can go through his presentation on his proposal that I think I gave a copy to everybody. Back in September is when I came to the council here and offered the planning commission services to help do some additional marketing for this property. And we met with some city staff to kind of go over what that proposal might look like and then presented that to the council in early October. And with your blessing, we formally sent that out at the end of October to about 90 developers, 40 architecture firms. And in this process, we also worked with Terrace Real Estate, Jesse Caston, locally here. Shortly after we mailed that and emailed out the RFP, he also sent it to his contact list through Terrace and then posted on a few of sites through their distribution network. And real quick, I guess I do want to take a step back and thank also McClure Engineering in that timeframe there. Some staff from their North Liberty office came down and did a basic structural evaluation for us, as something that we could put in the RFP and something that potential developers could see about the structural status of the building, because we knew that was going to be a question that came up. So, they offered that as a free service. I appreciate their help. But through that process, when we mailed that out late October, they were due back in, I think it was January 20th. We got about, I should say, we got 15 to 20 different companies to reach out to us via phone or email, and we had eight specific site visits with about 10 different companies. And ultimately, that led to two proposals with Brian here, Midwest Cornerstone Property Management, and then a group, I don't forget the name of it, FGP Development out of Des Moines. There were several others that were interested, but I think a couple different issues that led to some other companies not putting in their proposals. That was just a discussion here on the federal level. I know a couple of companies were very concerned with the new administration and the changes there, concerned about both the housing market and what might happen there, and also tax credit markets had concerns over that. So, they weren't comfortable putting a proposal together with some uncertainties there. So, I think it was maybe six months from now, some of those companies would be very interested, depending on where we're at, I guess, six months from now. But I think the concern's there. And some of them were just, the timing wasn't very good with some of the other projects, and they were really busy with some other projects and thought that the timeline was maybe a little too short for them. So, but even through some of those challenges, we got the two proposals. And I guess one other thing I'll mention, since Andy kind of talked to her a little bit before the meeting, she was showing me some pictures, and we talked for just a second. A couple of companies did express interest in historic tax credits and asked kind of the standing of that. So, we did just a little bit of research on their behalf to get an idea and sense of how likely it would be to get the building on the register in case they wanted to put a proposal together for that, for that purpose. So, I do think through some of the research and work with the state Historic Preservation Office, there's definitely a good chance that this property would be eligible for the historic register in the future, depending on who you work with, that might be an option for somebody. So, just heads up on that. Any questions for me before I turn it over? Actually, one more thing, I guess I'll say. So, we had the one presentation tonight from Brian at Midwest Cornerstone. We'll have another presentation from the other group, the next work session on the 27th. And I guess we haven't really discussed this necessarily, but I would assume maybe a work session after that, there'd probably be a discussion of this group about how to move forward and decisions to make on that. So, unless you have anything.
That's what I was going to ask.
I'm glad, I just kind of saw that, and it reminded me, too, that I was going to say that. So, if you don't have any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Brian with Midwest Cornerstone to go over the proposals.
Thank you, Zach.
Good evening. Hello. Almost. Thank you for letting me address you this evening. My name is Brian Anderson, and I'm with Midwest Cornerstone Property Management. I'm the owner, and I guess I'm the CEO. Prior to that, I worked for Sears for 21 years in new store and remodel construction, which is where I gained a lot of experience with commercial construction. We had a lot of buildings that were older that we renovated. We had a lot of new from the ground up construction. So, I have a lot of experience that may not be apparent through my current business, which is purchasing single-family homes, renovating them, and then just simply leasing them out for, you know, tenants. We live in, I live in Iron Mountain, Michigan, and here in Burlington. My wife is a doctor in Iron Mountain, so we'll be there till she's done. And then, we're going to be settling back here in southeast Iowa. We have properties in Michigan, Iowa, Illinois, and also in North Carolina and Nevada. But some of those are smaller quantities, so we don't really, you know, do a lot in those states, but we are in that, in that area also. Basically, the, what we do is we just purchase homes, we renovate them, as I said, and then lease them out. We try to take them with the lowest cost to their highest level, making them appealing to a different level of tenant that will take care of the property, have a long-term tenant and an occupancy rate that's high and a low turnover. And it's been working well for us for, since 93, when we actually founded Midwest Cornerstone. I was still working for Sears at the time. After I left Sears in 2009, then our growth was large. Every year, it just doubled or tripled. For example, last year, we had 30 properties that we purchased and renovated. And on a side note, I have some family that actually joined with their own LLC, and now we're buying properties for them and then renovating them also. Two of theirs are here in Burlington. In addition to, I have three other properties here in Burlington, and we're just kind of welcoming ourselves to the community. We have some strategies that we employ. We'll, you know, we'll try to buy the houses as low as we can, but we're not afraid of putting money and experience into them to get them to a level to where, you know, we can get a highest rent that's possible for it. We do that on purpose. It maintains the property. It gives us money to pay for the future improvements, and it also basically just keeps the kind of tenant that we want in the property. They take pride in the home, even if it's not their own. It's not their house, but it is their home, and that has worked very well for us. We also purchase properties kind of in clusters, and I don't mean at the same time, but we purchase them, over time, we'll try to, you know, take whatever comes up in the neighborhood if we can. That helps to improve our control of how the neighborhood is presented, how the housing standard is presented, and the control of like, what tenants are accepted. And it's worked very well in some areas. Small town in here in Iowa, we own about 45% of this town, but it's worked very well. We've been able to bring it back to a condition where, you know, it's a beautiful little town to drive through, it's got a couple little stores and things to that effect that make it a home, a place where people want to call home. That would be a little more difficult to happen in a place like Burlington, but I certainly would consider, you know, buying properties within neighborhoods. So, that's quite a bit about us. I'd like to move on to the actual school proposal. Here is actually some of the properties that we have. This one's in Burlington, 1210 Jefferson Street. This is how I became interested in the Apollo School, just two blocks over. And you can see the Apollo School from the second floor and from the two-story balcony on this house. This was purchased less than a year ago, and this was prior to our purchase. And we've done significant work on the interior of this property, and it's, it's just beautiful inside, both modernizing and restoration work. We'll be doing the exterior, it should be completed by spring. With that, I just kind of stumbled upon the proposal and going on with the Apollo School because I decided I'd kind of like to have that building, because I'd like to maybe control what goes on there and maybe do something with it. In the meantime, I came in three weeks after they sent out the requests for proposals. So, I had to kind of play catch-up. These are just some properties that we've purchased. For example, I'll give you some financials on how it works for us. This is a property that we purchased for $29,000 back in 2002. It's very historic inside, built in 1896. It's beautiful boardwork on the interior. It's a little small, a little on the interior. It's a little small, little small town north of Mount Pleasant. But we've been doing work on it, maintaining it, new foundation, new metal roof that just went on. It was just appraised for $84,000. We've probably got about 40 total in it. It's been rented by the same people for nine years. So we have a lot of success with our approach. This is a house that we have in Danville, Iowa, right next to the Danville Bank. It's just a beautiful Victorian. This is a new purchase from last year, it's almost a year now. Now that's the day that I bought it. It has a front porch, fence, deck. The whole interior's been converted to a luxury home. This is an old school. That's why, one of the reasons I wanted to include it, the oldest school in Mount Pleasant. It used to be a stats manufacturing plant. They have a metal building on the side. So, you know, there's some drawbacks. It had been an eyesore. We've converted it inside into a luxury home of 4,800 square feet. And we're on the outside in the spring. We already have the new roof on and all the decks and fence. Then we'll tuck point it and paint the exterior trim and it'll be beautiful. This one, I, I believe that property that I paid $30,000 for will come into a little over $300,000. Last year, we did three reappraisals to pull out financing to do other properties. We were dead on on almost every one, within a couple thousand of what they appraise at. So we've got a good experience and good judgment on to kind of calculate where we're at. This is just a property in Plymouth, Illinois, Iron Mountain, Michigan. So now for the school itself, we're just gonna take your purchase price that you recommended in the proposal. We want to put in high-end luxury apartments and condos. And I say condos, we're gonna go in them as condos, whether we sell them at all or any or partial, it would be up to us. But the, would be available potentially as a condo sale for those people that looking to have their own stake in it. The size of the apartments will be from 1,060 to 1,671, and that can vary still. The plans are in the proposal, but the plans can still change a little bit for each, you know, for the units. One of the things we want to offer is the preservation of the architectural heritage of the building. The exterior is very solid. There's not a problem with that. It looks good still, you know, minus the missing windows, I guess. And the boarded outdoors. But I mean, the structure is solid and it looks good. Inside, we would try to preserve all of the architectural history that we could. The staircases, the hallways, some of the rooms have built-in cabinets that have been there since the place was built in 1910. Some of those can be worked into the new units that we would be putting into the building. Also, a few of the areas, we would have no use for ourselves, the big air exchange room, just some areas that would be left or restored to allow for tours and so on to continue to go through the building, even though it's in a finished state, to kind of give, I've been in touch with the Heritage Trust Society through my home that I have here on the old Crapell Mansion up on Sixth Street. And they do tours and I've learned through that. So we would offer the school up as a tour facility to help them raise money. That's just a side thing. But we would preserve certain areas, have a classroom as a 1910 classroom, you know, just to kind of keep the interest in the building continual. We would do a two-phase restoration and renovation of the project, with the first phase being the original structure of the building. And that would be 22 units and the common areas. One of the things that I think that we can tell you that I'm confident that we will do that might be appealing to you is we'd actually do something with the building right away. First things we would do is we'd get a crew in there and clean out all the debris from years of decay. We'll replace all the windows, get the doors operating, open it up to make it look like something's happening. Basically, we clean up the grounds, we'll keep them maintained and get electricity put in so we can get ready to start our project. Within 60 days, we would have all of that happening. So you could have a facility that you're no longer responsible for, still looks appealing and is somewhat more secure than it was. It's kind of self-explanatory if you read through here. Six on the lower level, eight on the main and eight on the second floor. All common areas, the original structure will be improved for the tenants' use, so we'll restore hallways and so on. We've had a front parking lot for approximately 20 cars. And hopefully, within the first year, at least an occupancy would occur. Two years for the first 22 units to be completed. The first phase budget's at about $3 million. And that includes like the restoration of the hallways, repair the roof and the windows and so on. As the project continues to grow and occupancy rates start to increase, we would have an onsite property manager who works for Midwest Cornerstone. This is just a layout of the areas that, on the front of the building where the condos are. And they're in your pages. So I will just scan through those quickly unless there's any questions regarding that. These are examples of the units. This is a ground floor unit with just one level. This is the second proposal for the second floor. And you'll note that on those, we're trying to do two-story or loft apartments. There is a five-foot gap between the ceilings and the original floor and the actual roof that we can take out, creating a 19-foot, four-inch area, 19-foot, four inches of vertical height that we can use to put in a loft system. So we would have these units like this would be the main floor. Then we put in staircases to go up to the second level. The area, if you'll note in the front here, that's, nothing's drawn in. That's two stories or 19-foot, you know, four, 19-foot high. And so that would be you look out from the second rooms down into the lower level and out through the windows. Second phase would be an additional 18 units with an additional budget range of approximately $2 million. And those are all the spaces that are assigned on the thing, on the, on the layout. And you can tell where those units are also located. In the blue, you'll find that there are commercial spaces or other spaces set aside for other use. One thing I, I want to do to make the building appealing to residents is to basically offer commercial space available for, you know, some, maybe a restaurant or a bar of some type or, you know, I always have in mind like a Gators too or something like that. Anybody that wants to operate a restaurant here would be, this would be a premium location due to our tenants and what we hope to have happen within the neighborhood because of what we're doing. One opportunity that I've been pursuing is a dinner theater for the auditorium, which would make that open to the community. It would be something that would cause traffic into the building, allowing for more other commercial aspects to develop from that. And there's a significant portion set aside for commercial application also. One of the gymnasiums would be used for the tenants, for their exercise and area and, you know, just a space to do whatever. The other gymnasium would become commercial space for whatever. It could be used as a gymnasium for something or can be converted to a big restaurant. It really doesn't matter to me if we had to have something that would be successful. We're open to other ideas from the council or community on this property. We don't want to just walk in and, you know, we're gonna try to do what we can that's best for the building and for the community on it. We'd kind of like to include the westward expansion of everything that's been going on downtown. In the future, I propose garages on the parking lot and then potentially apartments above those are townhomes, as we would say. The garages initially would be for the tenants in the actual, the old school. I have some requests that we would seek from the city to make this a little more beneficial for us. Expanding the cul-de-sac along University Place, that might allow for better fire access. It's very small right now, barely could get a truck down there. It would also allow for convenient drop-off if the building had commercial applications. I would request streetlights that are similar to the downtown area to be placed along that street that's heading right to the main entrance of the building. City and building code and nuisance enforcement of the surrounding neighborhood. I think that there's a lot of potential growth there for just enforcing what is already on the books that people need to do to maintain their properties correctly. Make them so they become an asset to, not only to the school, but the whole neighborhood just changes. So houses that don't have paint, houses with mattresses on the front porch, cars abandoned, all that, I would seek to have that addressed through you guys. And then I would want the, the College Street, which is between the parking lot and the actual building, vacated, turned over to Midwest Cornerstone as our property. And then I would grant easement rights for the city utility and sewer or whatever was needed. I just want to be able to cease traffic between those two locations and potentially put a, from the garages, a covered walkway. And we can't do that if it's a street. That's me. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer anything you have.
Scale-wise, this is a pretty big project relative to what you've been doing, right?
I would say this is bigger. We do large-scale projects, but this would be huge. This would be along the lines of something that I would have done from Sears' point of view in a square footage level.
I see.
But from a point of view, we do 30 properties a year on varied scales from, you know, a thousand-square-foot home to a four, 5,000-square-foot property. But no, I will, I have not done anything this massive before, but, you know, from a residential approach. But I have had large properties that I've done with my previous business employer.
It's a beautiful building.
It is. That's actually quite stunning.
It is, it is. And we, well, I think most people don't want the building tore down. It's just something has to be done with. And I, I just want to say, I like your plans. I like your approach.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming down. Where'd you get the tie from? We'll, we'll talk about that.
If you must know, it came today from Yonkers.
All righty then. Appreciate your honesty.
Yes. Any other questions or anything you would have about this proposal or my experience?
You weren't asking for the TIF rebate?
I am asking for that. I'm asking for no low-income housing grants. If there's something comes up from a historic point of view where there's grants that become available from that, I would seek that. I don't want to have any ties to any, most other grants that are available from, you know, for a housing assistance.
What are the grants here, what are the grants you're looking at again?
Well, there's the tax-accompanied financing, I believe is what it's called.
That would be a TIF rebate.
And then, as of yet, there are none. But from a historic preservation point of view, if it becomes on the National Historic Register, anything like that, that might come up that would assist in.
Okay, well, TIF is, okay. I got you.
And, and so what would be the TIF arrangement that you were looking for?
What we had put in the development proposal was a 15-year TIF rebate, up to 100%. Now, you could ask for something less than that, with maybe four years of.
Or more.
No, no, not more.
Oh, okay. I just was trying to get in the tit for tat on the TIF. Yes. So.
Yeah, but that was, that was kind of what the, the floor was on there and what was part of the proposal was a 15-year TIF rebate. We did have a little discussion, I think, about the, how TIF rebate works in regards, you don't get the full, full value of taxes back. You get the portion that's eligible for the rebate, what we're able to capture. So you pay your full taxes and currently, full taxes are $41 or something like that. And $32 of it is eligible for the rebate to come back on, on a per-thousand valuation. We talked, as a group that looked at this, Zach, Eric, myself, Jason Hutchison and Jesse Caston, reviewing this proposal and one that you'll see this next week, you'll find, or two weeks from now, two very different proposals. Is it possible to get those on maybe your page, Eric? Because it, for public to be able to see and view, it would be kind of nice for them to be able to have a chance to review them and not, because they haven't seen, they, they don't get to see the full thing with the presentation that was done. The things that were being asked for in this project are all things that are doable from the city's perspective. The utilities was one we had a discussion and with appropriate easement, that can be worked out. The lighting makes sense to, to, to see done moving forward in there and that even a roundabout, depending on, the cul-de-sac, sorry. Let's not do a roundabout there.
Don't necessarily do a roundabout.
The parking lot is a developer's responsibility, but the, I, I could see the cul-de-sac if we can, he's willing to turn over the land to make it.
Yes.
Doable. I would think that if we were doing this, we'd want to see the development in process before we look to do the cul-de-sac.
I would agree that any of the proposed requests from me would be as a result of progress on my end. I don't really have a problem with that. I would expect that. I would also expect that perhaps the city would understand that we're coming into this and you're not going to have 48 units in a year. Part of that money will be coming back from the rent or sale of units to continue forward with it.
Another.
The viability of it is 22 units, for sure. I'm convinced that that will work. Anything past that would determine upon the rents and the rates of the properties that they were to sell.
Another piece that we had talked about, although these are all things that would have to be talked about further if, if we were ultimately moving forward with this proposal, it'd be a different list of things with the other proposal. The, the roof, making sure that we had some provision on this, similar to what we've done with other developments. And we'd have to have some adequate timelines put in place. If we're giving up a property, typically with the, like, for example, the single-family homes, we have clawback provisions depending on if the developer is, does not progress with the project. And we'd have to have something put in place that would work out, that's comfortable for the developer and makes sense for him as well as for us in regards to the property.
The roof is part of my 60-day.
Yeah.
Out thing, just so you know. I would, I would only have some limitation with that regarding the feasibility of a claw, you call it a clawback or claw?
A clawback.
Clawback.
Eric, how have you done that in the past with?
Single-family homes, it's more of a, we don't transfer the deed until they make substantial progress, but we're looking at homes purchased for a few thousand and putting 10,000 into it.
This would be different because a bank is not gonna allow to have you first clawback if there is funding involved from them.
We would want to have some level of arrangement and we'd maybe work that out with bonding attorney too, if we get down to that road and.
I don't mind having some type of a guarantee that we make a progress on the building at a reasonable pace. I mean, that's only fair.
And one of the things that we did with even Downtown Partners is for the roof there was a set aside of funds for the, specifically for the roof. And I don't know what that kind of arrangement would be, but we just want to make sure that, or I think that we'd have some recommendations for that. Just, again, that's moving down farther than what we're at.
Well, that's all right. I mean, hopefully, we'll get to that point.
And regardless of the proposal, one of the things that's, this is, as a TIF project, there is a procedure to go through for if you were to move forward with either developer with, with a, on a TIF project. You're doing a sale of property through, through, through the urban renewal law. There is a notice provision within that and we have to go, there's some steps that we have to go through to, I think it's a 30-day notice of our planned intent of project, this similar to what we had to do with the manor when we did that sale. So there, there are a few hoops of, for timing issues.
Anticipated that, which is why I actually was somewhat vague with the closing. That's really gonna be up to when the city of Burlington's documents can be ready.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with closing at any point for the initial purchase, for sure.
I'm glad to hear you say that you're willing to have these provisions relating to progress because you know, being from Burlington, you know the history of that building, how many people have come forward with the magic solution for that building and nothing's been done yet. So.
One of the reasons I'm doing my 60-day guarantee, that's part of my own offer as a clawback or whatever you want to say.
Right.
Meaning that if you see that that's going on, that's going to change the whole perspective of the neighborhood as soon as that happens.
Well, there's a lot of skepticism out there.
I understand that. I've been reading it. I hear it. But I actually get excited about these things. I mean, we've converted properties that we bought for $3,500 into beautiful homes, nothing fancy. But they rent, they've been rented to the same people and for $3,500 and another 20 grand, then as, because we've done all the other houses in the neighborhood, all of a sudden it's worth $47,000. You know, not a lot, but I plan on doing that here. I have my eye on a lot of properties on, in my, my area of town, which I call Heritage Hill. So I have other plans just besides the school. But anyway, I mean, are there any other questions regarding my proposal or anything about what Midwest Cornerstone does or I'm happy to.
I am, man.
Answer anything.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate your time.
I do have to say, I appreciate somebody local who's interested in doing this because that gives me a better feeling than what we've experienced in the past. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good deal. Next, we have a presentation for Floodwall, Eastern Kim and Nick McGregor.
Still Leo Foley with Dean, Eastern Kim. We've briefed, we've briefed, briefed your staff and your steering committee on this project in December, but questions? and your steering committee on this project in December, but questions have come up and we thought it would be a good time to get in front of you. Questions considering demolition of Phase Five, restoration of Phase Five, what's going to, the final look, what's going to happen with the fountain, schedules, money, permits. So I want to hit all that today. So bottom left shows what we kind of have out there today. Bottom, top right shows the final master plan of when all the phases are done, what we're hoping to have. Again, this is looking at the fountain, looking at an aerial view of what you have today. So what this is showing you is the blue line is essentially what the foundation of our wall is going to look like. And I'm going to talk to you a little more about the foundation of the wall. So that's all underground. We're going to be putting in new piling, the sheet pile you have now, we're going to use that kind of as a cutoff. But we thought it was all sheet pile at first, about half of it sheet pile, half of it's what's called soldier pile concrete wall. The problem with soldier pile concrete wall is it really can't take much force on top of it. So we're going to go inside of that wall, three feet, and more or less build complete new foundations. That's what the blue line shows. The red line, I don't know if this works or not, yeah. This red line basically shows the excavation that just for that foundation, the minimum excavation we're going to need. And that's what I was showing you there. The next picture shows what we intend for orange would be the demolition and the yellow is kind of the construction staging. To do a big project like this, you need a lot of area. So even though the contractor can use this parking lot, he'd still eventually is going to be redoing that parking lot. So that's why we say that whole area is staging, including, that's where the, the current, fountain, thank you, sir. So, and this is what we intend Phase Five to look like when we're done. So this is how Phase Five will end up looking. These are these paths that we're coming down from the main streets of the building here. I was just showing you what the inside looks like. So that gets us to cost. What, where are we at with cost? You can see at the bottom number, it's a little hard for me to see with my eyes, about seven point five million dollars total cost. A lot of that cost is in this underground concrete wall and foundation, which is about two point five million dollars. That's a cost that we really didn't expect to be quite that high. Jim had told us he would like us to have this first Phase Five, Phase Five from the pump station, the lift station at Market Street, all the way to the end of the Port Building. And that's what we were trying to get in here. We were trying to do that within five million dollars. So as you can see, seven point five is not within five million dollars. We do think, with all of our studies, we've done a lot of, we've done ground penetrating radar to find that this, the sheet pile wall is held back by two sets of tiebacks, steel wires that go back to a dead man in the parking lot. And we're going to be putting sheet or pilings every seven foot, forty feet deep. We don't want to hit those. So we were able to find, we found drawings, drawings that when they redid the parking lot, that said, they're still there, but they're not in the location shown on these drawings. They didn't, they didn't draw them in and tell us where they were. So we did do some, some ground penetrating radar and found out we could find them. Now, we didn't find every one of them. We're going to tell a contractor, they have to build a, do an excavation so they can make sure that they find them and that they have them, and we can move our, move our sheet piling around. We're also going to use the sheet piling that's out in front and the soldier pile wall as a cutoff, a seepage cutoff. And at the bottom of that, we're going to put a, put another, at the bottom of our foundation, we're going to put another seepage, like a sewer, almost like a foundation drain. So any flow that comes through there will go into a foundation drain and go to a manhole eventually with a pump station. As you can see, there's no pump stations in here. So that's Phase Five, right now as it stands. What I told Jim is we are designing full speed ahead to build from the pump station all the way to here, and we have it laid out, and we can move things back, we can take things away if we have to. But right now, we're on schedule to get this done. Here's our, here's our schedule. Right now, as of today, we're about seventy-five percent plans. We're going to give you, we've given you one set of plans at about sixty-five or sixty percent. We're going to give you another set tomorrow. It's going to be a full set of plans and specifications at seventy-five percent. We're also going to send those plans to the Iowa Hazard Mitigation Group. The Corps of Engineers has already seen them and has signed off. So they are happy with the way we're going to build the project. The DNR, Iowa DNR, is the flood plain management people, they have some concerns still, but I believe I will have that permit, I think I had them in this area, right. Advertised bids, April. So by the end of, by the beginning of March, I think I'll have that DNR permit. What they asked is we modeled it and showed them exactly what we're going to do with the flood heights, and they seem happy with that. They do want me to give them a, a write-up of how you're going to handle a flood during, and I know Nick's going to talk a little bit about that, but how are you going to pump? What do you do currently with pumping? And it's really not that big of a deal. For instance, Rock Island, they have no pump stations. They have the same kind of system you have, and they just temporarily pump every year. Matter of fact, FEMA pays for them to pump every, or every time there's a flood. Maybe that should be every year, but not. So anyway, we, we advertised for bids in April, we received bids in May, contract bonds, council gets to approve in June. Hazardous mitigation, before we go forward, the Iowa Hazard Mitigation has to sign off. We've done this before with them. It's usually a paperwork exercise and not a big problem. Start construction July first, right after steamboat days, and then we, construction substantially complete Phase Five in May. This is just letting you know what the wall ended up looking like. So that wall right there is twenty, twenty-two inches thick because of the requirement structurally we needed. These bump outs are about every twenty feet, and the logs are ten feet. The steel logs that you see here are ten feet. So you have an intermediate post that'll go up and a full post that goes up here. So you have this intermediate and a full each way. The bump outs are because they have these little kickbacks that have to be on them. That's essentially what it looks like with the steel plates, and those plates come off and everything goes down. Nick and his crew went to Davenport. Davenport actually put one of these up for them to show them how it was put up. They, they basically are the experts in the state for putting that thing up and taking it down. This is just showing that the, we're going to have those areas that are with no wall, and we'll have some kind of a railing system. We're designing that just to make sure and what it looks like. We're doing some current paving pattern that's in this next thing. What we've been told basically is, we want to make sure that the city staff, the same thing the staff's using everywhere else, we use here. We're trying to use no aggregate, because we were having trouble matching aggregate. The city is having those kind of troubles. So we're looking at doing this with like a broom finish or some type of a sandblaster, making this pattern with, this area, of course, is like a brick or a stone, and then this is just patterns in the, in the concrete. So it'll be easy to do and easy to maintain. People have said, hey, what about the water feature? That's not in this phase. It's really not in any of our phases. That's something we're looking at in the future to do, potentially. It's something, we showed it in our plans in here, and here we showed a water, a water feature. We've taken your staff over to Rock Island and showed them the downtown Rock Island, because it has a similar water feature. I've talked to Davenport, and I think the last time I was here, we got in a discussion about, these are expensive units, these are hard to maintain, these are very popular. But everything you told me, sir, you were right, because every city I talked to says the same thing. Yes, it's expensive. Yes, it's kind of hard to maintain. Yes, we really like it and want more of them. So I'm just telling you what I've heard. Davenport particularly and Rock Island, we, our building now is in downtown Rock Island. It is exactly what our architect friends at Smith Group JJR say. It's like a magnet to the downtown. It attracts people. When you have it done right, not that yours isn't, but I mean, the older ones aren't the same way. These new ones are done right, and they really are a feature that everybody likes. I just thought I'd give you a little there, more pictures of just what they look like. The one in Rock Island has, in, in, in any summer day, hundreds of kids with their parents all sitting around. So that's really, in a nutshell, what I had. Couple of more things to go back to money. We still think we had twenty-six point two million dollar grant. Jim has asked me specifically, can we stay within that twenty-six point two million dollar grant if we fund this first phase like it is? It's going to be a hard thing for us to do, but we think we have a real good chance at doing it. There's things we can do. We can cut back on what the pump stations look like. We can cut back the foundations. We made an assumption we could use that, what, what we thought was a sheet pile wall as a structural wall the whole way, and it couldn't be used. There's no other areas that we made that assumption, because it's not there. So we think we have a real good chance. When I left the office today, as you well know, everybody that knows, when it comes to engineering, costs get finer and finer and finer as you get closer and closer to bid documents. Well, our bid documents are here. They came in today and said, I think you're a million dollars high. And we might be a million dollars high, but I'm still higher than what Jim wants me to be. What I'm telling you is I think we're going in the right direction. That seven point five might come down to six five by the time bid date comes, but it's not going to come down to five million dollars. If it comes down to that six five, Kim, we bid it. Should we put things in there that we don't construct? Like I can do an alternate, and maybe the part that's behind the auditorium, I can leave that whole part out till a different phase. And I told Jim that I, that's not how I'd planned to do it, but if we have to do it that way, that's how we'll do it. I think you should try to get as much as you can, but I don't understand the bonding rates and whether you can do that or not. So that's kind of, I wanted to open it up more for discussion than anything.
One of the things that, as we were talking about this, one of the bills that I forwarded to you from the league's update, House Study Bill ninety-one, it has not gone, has not gotten, gotten to a subcommittee yet, hasn't been scheduled for a hearing. If that were to go through and be approved this session, House Study Bill ninety-one is in regards to essential government purposes for bonds, and it lists several different categories of bonds that have been considered essential government services, making them general corporate purposes. The difference on that, for those who don't keep track of this stuff on a daily basis, the essential corporate purpose, you hold a public hearing, and after you've held a public hearing to let the public know you're, you're thinking about bonding for a given one of these projects, you can take a vote after consideration of the public comments received. And you can approve going into a bond arrangement for that, which is what we just did for the borrowing of a little over five million dollars for this first phase. If it goes over the general corporate purpose, in order to bond, you, we would be required to go to a vote, and you'd have to have sixty percent approval. Given that that landscape may change between now and the next phase of this project, and we don't know what this session will hold yet, because that bill was just introduced this last week. But if that goes through, and we have the prospect that we won't be able to bond for subsequent phases of this, or get a, something that's approved for bonding, our subsequent work will, will become more backloaded instead of frontloaded. Instead of being able to do a project, a second project or phase of this project in two years, we'll be having to wait until funds have accumulated in a, in a manner to do it, or do a different phasing schedule where we're piecemealing the project more. With that kind of a viewpoint in mind, I want to make sure that this first phase is something that when you, when we do it, it will be able to stand on its own for, and not have pieces in the center that aren't finished that we can't use any of it. So that's going to be my big concern that we, as we do this first phase, that we somehow come up with a way to make sure that we get through it and are able to move forward with the next couple of years.
Very good. When you say piecemeal, doesn't that just add the cost, add to the cost?
Well, as, as we talked about it, part of that, the, the area where he's looking at not doing that is the same area where a pumping station would be in the future.
Right.
So doing that, that intermediate piece there could be incorporated into whatever bid was done on the pumping stations in the future.
Right now, we'll have a, we'll have a pipe through there with a gate well and just a manhole. But eventually, we're going to build a pump station right there. So then we'd leave the gate well off and all the foundation off also, if we did it in that piecemeal.
I, I'm just worried about that. And then if we have flood protection, we're trying to do, and we're trying to fill in a gap where we haven't done the final wall, it just doesn't, to me, make any sort of sense.
I understand that right now, the twenty-six point two million dollars, we're going to fight as hard as we possibly can to come in totally within that twenty-six two. But also, we have been very successful with the same people at getting them to help pay for future, for costs that go up also, and especially costs that are part of the function of the project. Like, a spray ground is not. But because of the wall and the foundation, we probably got another five million dollars in a tomahawk. Right now, there's not money that doesn't look like it's available, even though they have a contingency spot, but I think there's a bunch of people that have used it. So I, I do think this program, even in the era that's coming with the, with the new administration, it's utilizing the city's tax dollars to do a project. Your tax dollars go to the state, you're using their, your own tax money to use it. So there's a lot of, the current administration likes that kind of, likes that kind of program, and the state of Iowa knows it. So they're pushing it real hard.
At the same time, I'd encourage you to let your thoughts be known in regards to that House Study Bill. There are several different pieces that are on that, that not just flood goes-
I hadn't heard of that. Did you say that just came out this week?
It came out last week.
Okay.
Not just the flood protection. There are issues related to street lighting, to airport runways, et cetera, that, that are also changed in classification. There's eight different changes that are made on that bill.
And what I, what I talked to you about was the construction of the flood wall, and I think Nick's done some work on the maintenance and how you put that up. Like I said, we brought him and his staff to Davenport, and I'm glad they went, because he can show you.
So based on some questions during the CIP, I wanted to, since he was going to present today on the flood wall, to discuss some of the objects that I have in the CIP budget and how we plan to operate the flood wall. So in there you see, as you remember, one hundred and twenty for six trailers, fifteen thousand for an enclosed trailer, and ten thousand to the Morton Building that's out on the riverfront, of which I've talked to the Riverfront Advisory Committee. So I, copyright infringement, I guess. I borrowed this presentation from the city of Davenport, so I don't want any plagiarism or any issues. So currently, what, kind of what we saw them do was an app this location, but it was about this location at the Woodman Park. I think it was put up five, six years ago when they, they began this project. This is just a, an image of the flood wall up, current, you know, protecting it from the river. This is what happened, I think it was in two thousand and eight, when, when you guys here also had flooding issues. This is what it looked like there. And this is kind of a cool image. They, they actually have a cool image down there where they show them playing baseball in the field when it's completely surrounded with water. But, so, these are some images of, of some of the reasons why we arrived to the conclusion for the CIP items that we did. Based on what they've done, and it didn't come out this way originally, it's kind of adapted over the years that they've been operating it. As you can see here, this is an example of the semi-trailer fully loaded with the, the racks- As you can see here, this is an example of the semi-trailer fully loaded with the, the racks of, um, logs, for, for lack of a better term, and then the planks. This is the enclosed trailer that I would be referring to. Actually, these bottom five are all, um, the enclosed trailer where they, they have some generators. They also have, um, tubs available for the, the multiple different, uh, specialty parts that come with attaching the, the, the temporary flood wall to the permanent wall, as well as, um, the sections that are gonna be installed, um, in the voids that Leo talked about. Uh, so this is kind of their operation as they pull up. Uh, they bring the trailers down and they unload it with forklifts. Um, and over here you see the, uh, you see the enclosed trailer kind of operates as a, um, operating center, so to speak. And this is, this is kind of what our installation process will look like, except for we are, we're basing most of ours off of the temporary, or, I'm sorry, the permanent wall. Uh, most of our installation will be on top of that permanent wall. So a flood of, I guess I don't even know what the temporary wall, or the permanent wall protects us to. It's forty-two inches, but what does that mean in flood height?
Forty-two inches is about the hundred-year flood height. I'm not sure right off the top of my head what that is.
Okay.
But it's a hundred-year flood for you.
And so what that would mean if we had a, you know, a hundred-year flood, we would go into the voided areas, um, where there's walkout areas and we'd have to put up, um, those temporary barriers to protect that. But we then would, after it becomes apparent that we need to prepare for more than a hundred-year flood, uh, we need to put up the temporaries on top of the permanent. And that would protect us to twenty-eight feet?
Twenty-eight feet, yes.
Um, so it's a little bit different setup than what they're doing here, but it's similar in the sense that the attachment process and the plank process is, is all the same. As you can see here, they have a, a unit where they, these columns or, um, pillars, as I'll call them, uh, they, I don't know what these weigh, but the ones that they showed us, they weigh a significant amount. So you need some sort of a unit. They use a forklift in year two, or not year two, but fiscal year nineteen, I have a telehandler in there. For this current year as operation, I'd like to try and rent a telehandler to see what kind of a unit or what we would want to use. But I believe that a, they use a telehandler as well, and then they say, they say they love it and also use it for multiple different other things. And so then they, they start, um, as you can see over here, they have the pillars installed and, and zip down into the concrete. Um, and then they start the installation of the logs. Um, they use like a skyjack, um, alongside of there to, to lay, to lay them in there. The units that they're laying in there are probably.
Eight to fourteen foot?
They vary in length. The ones we will be installing are twenty-foot long.
Ten, ten, ten-foot long, twenty-foot openings. Ten-foot logs will be an intermediate.
Okay.
Intermediate cold. And they'll be ten-foot long.
And this is kind of just some more pictures of, of the wall going up. They ha, I think it staggers, ours will be pretty even across the top.
Yours is gonna be pretty straight too. Which will help a lot.
Okay, I kinda threw this in there, just a, an idea, um, I had Leo help get me some of the quantities on, on what we will be dealing with, with the section for phase five. Um, we'll have seventy posts, a hundred and, or geez, five hundred and seventy logs, and those are, those are twenty footers, but then they're also.
They are twenty footers.
They are, they're all twenty footers. But then there's some sections where it cuts back, so there'll be some, uh, some shorter sections. And then there's three hundred different various type of special, different types of bolts. So from what I got the description from Brian, is they're, you know, they're pretty, pretty substantial bolts that we're tapping into the concrete because they have to, you know, hold against the, the pressures of the water pushing against it. So in, I'll go back. In the development of the CIP items and as to the reason why, um, like he said, I took up my two divisional managers, Chris and Braden, and then I took along three, uh, maintenance leads. And we watched them install, um, it wasn't a full section, it was just one of those model demonstration sections on, on how they do it and what kind of equipment, that we got a list of what kind of equipment they have. And it's the reason why. And I, we brought them back, I brought the staff back and had a meeting as to what we want to try and purchase to be able to install our flood wall. The biggest question that I don't think we can really quite comprehend until we, till we get on it is, is the number of trailers. Six was just an estimate. They have three trailers for eight hundred foot of flood wall and we have fourteen hundred foot. I don't know what that means in square footage. Um, we do, we will have longer sections, so they might not be as tightly compacted on the trailers. But the biggest thing that I, in the operation of that, we have one forklift. And that's it. We have a skid loader, but that height of skid loader is not able to reach that level and handle the weight. So there is the possibility of, of renting a fork, or, um, sorry, a telehandler for the operation down at the flood wall. But as far as a, uh, the forklift to be able to unload and unload trailers, without that in two locations. We probably could rent one, to be fair, but I, I thought it was best to have them all on trailers prepped so a, a truck could pull into the shed where they're housed indoors and bring them down to the site where they're gonna be installed. And as far as the enclosed trailer, um, seeing the way they operated out of that enclosed trailer, they had electricity run through it. They had all of their things stacked up against the wall, labeled, um, i- i- they charged all their, you know, their impact drills. They, they had lights. Because I don't know how often it happens, being here only nine months, on, you know, when we install flood walls. Are we operating in, in weather conditions? It would be nice to have an area where you can come into and kind of plan, um, how things are going. So that, that's kind of the reason for the enclosed trailer. The, the Morton Building, um, involves, uh, some improvements to the out front with the rock and then the garage door as well. Um, it's a temporary fix, um, until we get the money in twenty twenty-one for a, for a permanent structure where the, the equipment will be housed. So, um, I can go back through any sort of questions you have on the operation. But I'm, I, I can't express how thankful I am for Leo lining it up, for one, but also the city of Davenport and showing us kind of the way. You know, they hit some bumps and stuff along the way in their process to finally get to where they're at. And so I think that's why I, I wanted to try and follow the way they did it. Because it, it seems to, uh, seems to work fairly well for them. Um, and that's my biggest fear when I got into this, I was like, well, we have to plan CIP item, CIP items because we'll probably get this wall installed sometime next spring. So, you know, April, May, June. And so it'll be at the end of the fiscal year. But I don't want to not have equipment to be able to, to put this thing up. So the first time, I believe, when I talked to Leo, we have planned for the, the, one of the two firms.
The Flood Wall USA.
Flood USA, and then there's some German company, to have them actually install the wall the first time around. So that way, we can go through and label things the proper manner, um, and, and for one, see them do it. As, as much as Davenport's is gonna be similar to ours, there are gonna be different pieces and parts to it that aren't, you know, aren't the same as Davenport's. You know, they, their ratcheting system is gonna be completely different potentially than the one that we'll receive, so.
You're s, how long is it gonna take to put up this flood wall?
In, they, basing on, of course, what Davenport did as well, they had a crew of seven guys and they were able to install the eight hundred foot in two days.
So this is still gonna be a time-intensive thing, under fairly limited time constraints.
Correct.
With floodwaters coming up, which is one of the concerns about not having it on trailers. You're not only having to load it with, with another forklift or telehandler, uh, with staff, you're, you're diverting your resources between two locations and you're trying to do that under time constraints, which, which can be done. It's just, it's gonna.
And, and the one thing I don't want to have happen when we're installing the wall is, is I seen how, I don't wanna say delicate, because that's not the right word, how you need to safely install the, the planks downward because they do have rubber seals. And so I don't want, I don't want us to be down there and, and on, in a rush. Not that we won't be in a rush to a certain extent because it's gonna be flooding, but I, I want us to be able to take a, you know, a steady approach to installing the flood wall.
So when you say two days, is that two twenty-four hour days or?
Um, I believe it.
Sixteen hour days.
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Two sixteen-hour days?
But they're, they're just a little smaller than you.
Yeah.
Correct.
And hopefully, we won't have to put these things up very often, right?
That would be the hope.
Hardly ever floods around here.
Well, but I thought we said the forty-two inch wall would take us up to the hundred-year record.
That's right.
Yeah.
You'll still have to put the intermediate wall, the wall between the openings up.
Okay, yeah.
Like the whole length of it, you're out. So we should not have to put that up very often.
The hundred-year flood is what, what height?
Twenty-two five.
Twenty-two five.
Twenty-two five.
So we, I think we've hit twenty-two five twice since I've been here. And for some of you, it's five or, five times, so.
A hundred, a hundred years comes around more frequently, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
When the Fornells come to town.
The Fornells.
The other advantage to this one, we are, we are doing it so they could just put three logs up or something like that. I don't know if you really ever want to do that, but it is gonna have.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's something a lot of cities have been asking for, so that's, it's not, it, it, for a while, it was like a big, um, a big change to their standard design, but now it's not.
Good.
That's a good point, yeah.
Okay. Now that I see the, the enclosed trailer and what's inside of it, I got a much different vision than what, uh, I had, was thinking in my mind. And on the trailers, I was not thinking forty-five foot tractor trailers. I was, uh, thinking when you said twenty thousand dollar trailers, they were something that would be pulled by a one-ton truck. That would, uh, be a fifth wheel type thing. I had, uh, I guess I hadn't envisioned this, uh, this much stuff.
There's gonna be a lot of material. And I hope that's what this, I hope that's what this appeared to as, as a clarification, more than a, you know, some sort of an argument that, that, that I was gonna have. But, um, no, I, I, I think we probably could do the trailers less than, you know, twenty thousand. I, I had some staff do some in, in checking on some used trailers. Um, he said he could probably get them for, you know, five grand, but they're a little questionable. They're roadworthy, but they don't have to be the best trailer in the world. But I wanted, I want it to be safe so that way we could get, you know, get the straps, build the racks that we're gonna need for the trailers. Because I want these to be, you know, customized and ready to go.
The trailers that this stuff is getting jacked up, you know, I mean, we're going to, uh, go through this process. We, we're gonna need good, not, not questionable trailers, but, uh, good, you know, good trailers to.
Well, you won't need new tra, you won't need new trailers either, but somewhere in the center.
Somewhere in the middle, middle ground.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure you can find that.
Well, you sure don't wanna have to do it and pull in there and all of a sudden you, you can't pull the trailer out, you know, that, that just.
And plus, I wanted to put a buffer in there in case we do need, you know, seven trailers to be able to fit all of the equipment on top of that.
Do you have any other questions for Nick?
Thank you, Leo. Thank you, Nick.
Nick, I don't know where we got you from, but, uh, it's good to have you. Uh, Presentation Six in Washington. Unless anybody, did you have anything else you were gonna say on that, Jim? Hey, Nick, just come on back.
Come on, come on back. Um, I, I talked about this a little bit in my budget presentation, but I wanted to re, re, uh, bring this conversation up just specifically on this topic. Um, I, this is budgeted for this current, well, it's planned for this current fiscal year, is, is, um, kind of talking with Jim. Um, planned for the hundred and ten thousand for just the concrete layer. Um, but I wanted to bring this up because if we, we don't have this conversation now and we go and do the project as planned, it'll be too late to plan for expanse going up. So I, I actually want to introduce, I don't know if any of you have ever met him, our city engineer, Jesse Howe. Um, he actually helped, he, well, I, he, I didn't do it, he did it. He, he did all the work on the estimates for, for the costs on everything, so I'll let him answer any questions.
All right. Nice to meet y'all.
Welcome, welcome, Jesse.
Thank you. Uh, I, I think what Nick was trying to allude to here as far as planning for the future, there's been some talk about putting a second level on this parking structure. And if we are serious about doing that, we should potentially consider doing the engineering work for footings so we could expand up in the future. We could certainly go ahead with the hundred and ten thousand and, and do an overlay in the sewer improvements. But, uh, if we are planning on going up, it might be a good idea to consider putting some of that infrastructure in now as far as footings in the ground to where you could build up, um, and you wouldn't need to tear up pavement to do so. So as you see there, uh, we had estimated for that process, uh, ninety thousand additional dollars if we were to do it now. And that includes, uh, getting a structural consultant on board, uh, putting footing in, putting footings in and basically getting it up to the part where you could build up if you elected to in the future. So I think it's more of a, just letting you guys know that that's the option right now, if you elect to go that way.
So you're saying it'd be a hundred, almost two hundred thousand?
It would be two hundred thousand now, per our estimates, yes. And then the additional cost in the future, and, and these were pretty rough numbers, but, uh, it was three hundred and ninety thousand, uh, for that second level in the future. For round about thirty spaces. So I don't know how appealing that is, but there it is.
But if we don't prepare for the second deck at ninety thousand, then we don't have an idea how much, if we decide to do it later, how, what we'd go back.
Yeah, basically what you'd end up doing later on is tearing up some of the pavement we'd be putting down now. Um, so you'd probably, I did not work up that figure, but you'd probably be in the neighborhood of twenty to thirty thousand, thereabouts, more at that time.
I didn't have ninety thousand more to throw into this project, let, let alone the three hundred and ninety thousand for a second deck to figure out where to cover.
Right.
Yep.
What I could figure out was to cover was that main, getting the main one. And that was really what the, the project that was budgeted for this year was designed to do, was just to do work on the, the main level.
Absolutely.
So. It's kind of up to you, to your prerogative. I put it forward with the idea of it just being the, the main level getting paved.
And that's what we're planning on doing now, I think. Just wanted to make you aware in case there was the desire to go to a second level, what we're getting into.
Yeah, and if we were swimming in money, that would be.
It would be a good option.
But, but that is what we want you to do. You're doing, you guys are right where you need to be. Right where you need to be.
Yeah, thank you. That's great.
And as you see on there, he's got a couple of other options. I, we asked for some green infrastructure.
Yeah, the green infrastructure alternatives, I believe we had, uh, an alternative for permeable pavement, which is kind of your more green infrastructure to where the water soaks through and, and goes through rather than running directly into your storm sewer. Um, that option was an additional forty-eight thousand. And then if you were to go to, uh, the permeable concrete pavers that, that you'll see here and there, I believe they're talking about doing the alley with those, that was an additional ninety thousand, so.
You're not giving anything away.
Green, well, the green stuff is.
Wow.
Is.
It's green.
It takes a little green to get the green infrastructure.
Well, and some of the thoughts there too, um, it's a, it's costs that I had a harder time finding a cash flow that would cover that. But the other piece is, if you are looking, if, if we did think that maybe you get four or five years down the road and you had the ability to do it, to put a second level on the deck, um, how much do you want to tear up and, uh, and make for not?
Yeah, yeah.
And that the green infrastructure would become completely.
You know, just throwing, just throwing it out there though, how much, how much difference, you know, what would happen in four years with, with the construction that was, you know, manned for a, for a possible, you know, second level? Is there gonna need to be, you know, with, with four years, would there be deterioration enough where there would have to be, you know, work done there too? I mean.
No, we're planning on repaving, putting concrete in, so you're on a parking lot, talking at least twenty years service life on that, more like thirty.
Made minor, minor crack ceiling at, at the most is what I could project. But when, when Jim and I talked about this project, um, this is probably the simplest area for a parking lot to go up because of the accessibility off of Washington. And, and not having to construct the actual ramp part to go up.
Right.
So that's kind of the reason why we wanted to know where it was now, just, you know, before we get into that process, so. I guess consensus, I don't know if that.
We don't have ninety thousand dollars.
No, I do think so, but...
I also didn't want to add the ninety. And I don't feel as bad about having to, if we do have a determination because of need for parking spots that's demonstrated, and you have a decision a few years down the road to add a second level, to spend the twenty to thirty thousand extra, that's not as much.
It's not prohibitive.
Yep.
Whereas you maybe spend a ninety thousand for something that never happens.
Yeah.
Right on.
I agree.
Thank you, guys. Nice to meet you, Jesse.
Okay, appointments, you might have any...
There's the newly, newly created tree advisory, Scott Zeiser, Linda Locke, Stacy Rector, and Joyce Taker. I don't have any problem with any of those. I think their applications are good. The Enhanced Night One-One Service Board, the Fire Chief is going to be our representative on that. So that's good.
We've got good representation. Anything else? Jim, anything?
We're going to be working, or Chief's continuing to work on his police department, trying to get building design done on that. And that's one that, you've had a couple of modifications that have gone on, and we're going to be, I know, having some discussions about where are we at timing and cost-wise on it as we move forward. And then as we get those costs, we're going to have to see where that fits with our budget. And so we'll see how, where we're moving as, we haven't gotten to that yet, but that's something to be looking for over the next couple of weeks to see where we stand as we're currently projected with that facility. Timing-wise, everything seems to be on schedule for us to be able to, I mean, we're gearing towards the idea of being able to start that work in August. So that's continuing to progress, and hopefully we're able to get that done next June.
Yeah, maybe.
He says may. But just stay tuned as we move forward with that. You've had a couple of steps taken place with the housing subdivision in the southern end of town. That's going to the Planning Commission next week to consider...
As long as we get everything back.
As long as we get everything back. And what's going on there at this phase?
This is the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. We need to create a plan for this area to be included, to be even considered for a TIF project.
So after that step is taken, it will come to the council for consideration for urban renewal TIF. So you have that to look forward to over the next few weeks.
Woo!
We talked, it was the property, the Washington, or the Typewriter Shop owned by, that DPI has the proud owner of right now, they're planning on coming to the council. I think they're working with Eric to get here in March.
Yeah, we'll have to look at the timeframe, but we talked, we just talked about it a little bit.
But, but we're, we need to find, they're trying to figure out where they're at with getting, when they're going to be able to get their work scheduled to be done there. And I think that when they, as they get that done, is when they're looking to try to get back in here. And he was, just asking him, he was hoping in March, but we'll see if it's then or to April. Crime Stoppers, you're having a fundraiser this weekend?
Crime Stoppers.
Saturday night. Who's playing?
David Kroll.
David Kroll. That's country, so I don't be completely out of bounds going to that event. Where is it? When?
Eight o'clock, Saturday night.
Eight o'clock at Comfort Suites, Saturday night. So tickets are fifteen dollars in advance, twenty dollars at the door. And Stephanie is one person who does happen to have tickets that she can sell you.
I've heard of this, I wonder why.
So...
Stephanie's going to be dancing all night.
This is one of their, one of your primary fundraisers for your organization to be able to provide rewards. The only other thing I would say is, you know, we've talked about this at a staff level today. As you move forward with talking about making cuts, every time you, that this gets brought up, everybody's in a state of nervousness over what's happening to their positions.
Yes.
What's happening to, what's going, what more is going to be demanded of me? We've had departments that have been mentioned, I mean, Building Department has gone from eight or nine, eight position?
Ten.
Ten at one point back in the early two thousands to now...
Seven.
Seven. Parks would be similar with some of the staffing changes that have occurred there. And so the more time that you spend not sure what you're doing for cuts or having these discussions out there, you have a state of anxiety within the complete staff over what's going to come out of this.
With the tax increase, that would take care of that.
Well, but you have then the public that has the concerns about that, too. So, I mean, I just want you to be respectful. And as you move through this process, as you do decide what areas you're taking a look at, move through it. If we can set up what areas you're concerned about and what order you're going to work through them and how fast, the sooner you work through that, I mean, really, in a manner that you don't make hasty decisions, but the sooner you move through that, the sooner you allow people to move on with their lives. So I don't know what else I can offer on it. It's just make sure that you remember that you have a complete workforce that's not sure what you're doing and feels it in their day-to-day operations. So...
Bob?
Anything? I've said enough at this time. Jim?
I do want to congratulate three outstanding young men, Duncan Delzow, Preston Terry, and Spencer Sherwood, who qualified for the state wrestling tournament. And people who have not wrestled, maybe just don't understand how hard it is to be a wrestler and how much work is involved and the sacrifices that are made. And so these three gentlemen, young men, are to be congratulated. So we wish them well. They start on Thursday, I believe, with the state wrestling tournament.
Awesome. I just want to, I do have to address with the positions, and people get nervous every time we have these conversations and have an anxiety. It's totally understandable, but I just want to throw out there, I have anxiety about it because having to think about people that I care about, what's going to happen in the future for their jobs. So it's not easy all the way around. Trust me. If anybody thinks that we're up there and, you know, you just make those decisions and it's no big deal, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. That's why a whole lot of people won't take out papers when it's election time, because it's a big deal and we get anxiety, too. So it's not, it's not anything personal from anything that I've ever seen. It's not anything personal. It's a tough situation to be in. So I want to, I want to put it to bed as soon as possible as well so that we can move forward. But just for anybody out there that's dealing with anxiety, you're not alone. We deal with anxiety, too, because it's, you are our friends and our neighbors, and we care about you. I do want to thank the police chief and the fire chief. You guys, you guys are all about it. And I want to give you your flowers, why you can smell them. And again, the South Hill Neighborhood Association had a breakfast this weekend. The city manager was there, but he had a bad attitude. I don't want to talk to you about it right now.
I had to talk to you. That's why I had a bad attitude.
Yeah, that's right. I forgot. So, okay, then you're forgiven. It had to do with me. But it's always good. And before I left, you know, I heard the same, the same statements, you know. It's good to see the police chief, the fire chief, out and about in the community. It makes a huge difference. It makes a huge difference. And I just want to say that I'm really digging that, and it does not go unnoticed. So thanks to both of you for being there, for, you know, for representing, for answering questions, for being thrown out there to make statements when you weren't ready for it. It's all good stuff, and it's appreciated. That's, that's all I've got. Tim Scan.
One thing. Just a reminder, we had a presentation on our downtown parking plan. We are having the open house this Thursday, the sixteenth, from five-thirty to seven at the Public Library, just to have items, or get input and discuss items that are being considered by the parking committee. So open to the public, come as you can between five-thirty and seven, and give your input on some ideas that are out there on downtown parking.
Right on. Let your voice be heard. We're listening, chief.
One quick one.
I just want to let you know, I just found out today, but the Hawkeye that did the story about a week ago on our Pieces program, and we talked about that, it's already been in a couple of national publications. Well, the Washington Times picked that up off the AP and printed that in their Sunday edition out in Washington, DC. So that's a big deal. I mean, the program's really getting a lot of national recognition. And I just want to thank Jackie and the crew out there at the school, Major Grimshaw, for their efforts there. I think that somebody's looking at the model, or they wouldn't be printing it. So thanks to everybody involved.
Do a good word. Do a good word. Well done. All right. Still positive things happening in Burlington. This meeting's adjourned. God bless you.
Thanks, council.